All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call to order the October 22nd, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can. We stand here today grateful for the many blessings we enjoy as citizens of Royal Oak. We are thankful for our safety, our quality of life, and our fellow neighbors. We ask for the wisdom, strength, and courage to serve each other with respect, dignity, and appreciation. We recognize there is not a single challenge, struggle, or obstacle that necessitates the abandonment of our kindness, compassion, and civility. We ask for the safety of our men and women in uniform and for the well-being of all those who serve our city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up on our agenda is item number four, Outstanding Customer Service Awards.
He works very hard to make everybody happy. According to his nomination, and I'm quoting, "Recently, the annual Art Explored Program from the Commission for the Arts changed out the artwork that is displayed around downtown. One of these pieces was in extremely large print titled 'Abe and Shades.' This piece had been on display for some time, actually several years, and the artist recognized that it had fallen into disrepair and requested that we dispose of it. This large piece was going to require some physical effort to make it small enough to fit into our dumpster. I asked Jeff if I could borrow a hammer so that I could start breaking it down. Not only did Jeff provide a hammer, but before I knew it, he was helping me take apart this massive wooden frame. The job would have taken me alone a good two hours, but with Jeff's help, we were done in under an hour. Jeff's always willing to help out, go above and beyond, and to do it all with a smile and a great attitude. For this, I'm nominating Jeff for an Outstanding Customer Service Award." Our selection team was impressed by Jeff going above and beyond for our Royal Oak team with a positive attitude and a smile. Thank you for your service, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Drew Gellisch is a Royal Oak Department of Public Services water service worker who excels at customer service. According to his nomination, "Despite many competing requirements, Drew responded to shut off the water at my house when I had a water leak in my basement due to bad valves. While on site, he recognized that my water meter was scheduled for an upgrade, and he took the initiative to remove the old meter and install a new one. This not only accelerated the city's water meter upgrade, but the new meter and hardware allowed me to finish my repairs more easily. Drew worked fast and was super efficient, but took time as he was working to provide me with some excellent insights into my water service. He was respectful, patient, honest, and knowledgeable. Drew Gellisch is a great representative for the Water Division, the Department of Public Service, and the City of Royal Oak. He helped me feel good about living in the city I grew up in and showed me DPS as spending my tax dollars wisely." Our selection team was impressed by Drew providing exceptional service to our resident. Thank you for your service, Drew. We have a tradition here. This came out of our Disney Way training. Many of the firms and organizations that have gone through Disney Way training have picked up on doing something that started at Pixar. And that is that they got these little scooters, actually, they used a little bigger one than we're using, and the employees actually used it for getting around their offices. But they've started using them as the award that goes to the department of the outstanding customer service employees. So each of these employees will receive a scooter. It's a little on the small side for these guys to take back and display in their department. Thank you both.
We actually have one more award that we're going to present tonight. I'm going to ask County Commissioner Dave Woodward to come up here and present this award to somebody very special to the City of Royal Oak, a shining light of pride for this city. Melanie Hallis, City Clerk, will you please come up here and join us? She didn't know this was coming.
I could tell by the look on her face.
It's pretty hard to surprise someone when someone who's partially responsible for the agenda has to be kept out of the loop for so long. But we have, I mean, an outstanding city clerk in Melanie Hallis. I mean, she runs incredible elections, and that what I'm going to talk about is elections. And many of us know, or some reports of the last primary election, and we saw incredible turnout, record turnout in some areas across Oakland County, particularly here in Royal Oak. And the reality is that there are about 75 precincts across Oakland County that ran out of ballots. But there's one person in particular, Melanie, who saw the surge long before a lot of others. And despite having increased ballots printed, she came to the conclusion and demonstrated determination to make sure that elections here run smoothly, and took it upon herself to develop Plan B and generate a whole bunch of additional ballots. And our county commission board actually instituted, I mean, investigated what happened. The reality is that we saw record turnout, and some places had ballots that were exhausted in case by noon. If our city clerk didn't act the way that she did and didn't be, wasn't proactive, we would have had all sorts of shortages probably about come noon on Election Day. And it's because of your leadership, which is recognized in the report, if you want to read the report on our county commission website, just for your leadership and running now, making sure everyone votes, but make sure every vote gets counted in its most smooth, incredible way, which you always do. This is a proclamation on behalf of myself and our chairman, Mike Ingeal, to recognize your leadership and frankly as a model for all our county clerks, I mean, our city clerks and township clerks around the county. So I want to say thank you, and we want to honor you with this proclamation.
We're so fortunate to have so many great folks working on our behalf in the City of Royal Oak. So this brings us to item number five, which is the City Employee Years of Service Awards. Mr. Johnson, are you going to join me? I don't know everyone's present here tonight. Matthew Day, Kelly Spanky, Jennifer Ricken, Alex Momo, Tracy Carbell. Come on up. Mr. Johnson, I'll hand these to you. We have a great mix of new and experienced Royal Oak staff here that are getting their service awards tonight. Mr. Johnson.
This is a new tradition for Royal Oak to actually hand out a pin to represent years of service. And the committee decided that it should only be the significant years of service that happened at this meeting. So they didn't go retro and deal with somebody who had 23 years of service already. They're hitting people that are at magic numbers. And that's not necessarily always a real high number, but in some cases it is. And we're going to start with Matthew Day, where that number is 30. And for Kelly Spanky, that number is 25. The rest of these are relatively new employees. Jennifer Ricken, first year of service completed. Alex Momo, first year of service. And Tracy Carbell, first year of service. Congratulations.
And in an era when it's really challenging to be in public service, we really have to commend these individuals for making a career serving their communities. So how about one more hand? All right. This brings us to item number six on the agenda, which is the proclamation congratulating the Royal Oak Lions Club. Well, we got a crew tonight. Proclamation congratulating the Royal Oak Lions Club. Whereas on June 7th, 1917, Lions Club International was founded by Melvin Jones in Chicago, Illinois. The name Lions stands for Liberty, Intelligent, Our Nation Safety. Today, Lions Clubs International, LCI, is the oldest service organization in the world at 101 years old. There are Lions Clubs in over 250 countries with nearly 2 million members worldwide. And whereas on 1925, at the Lions Clubs International Convention in Cedar Point, Ohio, Helen Keller challenged the Lions to be the Knights of the Blind in the Crusade Against Darkness. She later challenged them to also assist the hearing impaired. And whereas, on October 26th, 1928, the Royal Oak Lions Club was chartered at Mason Sandwich Shop in Royal Oak, sponsored by Lion Edward J. Jeffries of the Detroit Eastside Lions Club. The 22 charter members came from a variety of professional professions and all walks of life. The diversity continues today. And whereas in 1962, the Royal Oak Lions Club was the first service club in Royal Oak to contribute to the ICE Arena Project. And whereas in 1965, the Royal Oak Lions Club raised $74,000 to help build the swimming pool at the YMCA on 11 Mile Road. And whereas in 1977, the Royal Oak Lions Club held its first-century Club Dinner and reverse raffle, it continues to be an annual event and the largest fundraiser. And whereas, since 2002, the Royal Oak Lions Club has awarded over $150,000 in college scholarships to graduating seniors from Royal Oak High Schools. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby congratulate the Royal Oak Lions Club on their first 90 years of service to our community and wish them continued success. On behalf of the City of Royal Oak, we're very proud of the work that you do for our community. Your volunteer hours, your charity, your commitment to those in need is remarkable, and we thank you. For those who are new to the Royal Oak City Commission, I'm just going to go over a few rules. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be two public hearings at tonight's meeting. If you are here to comment on the plan of operation on the request of Main and Fifth Inc. or the vacation of the portion of Bassett Avenue right away, you may wait until the public hearings are open, and you can comment at that time, and the same rules will apply. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the public hearings, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll be asked to state your name and address, and be mindful that the City Commission does want to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes or less, and there's a timer right there at the podium to help you with your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us at any time with your comments or questions. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed or referred to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled to be discussed tonight on the agenda. Our city manager has also taken copious notes and does look into matters as needed. First off tonight, we are honored to be in the presence of Congressman Sandy Levin. I know he has some things he wishes to say tonight, our long-serving congressman who's retiring here shortly. Congressman Levin, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time this evening.
No, thank you for having me. I'm glad you gave an award to the Lions Club. Decades ago, two of our children played hockey, it seemed endlessly, at the Royal Oak Hockey Arena, and they loved it. So I just want to give you a brief report on the legislation of this year, and I want to focus especially on what has been done already. There's considerable legislation left to be undertaken, and we'll see what happens after the election. We're going into the so-called lame duck session. First, just a brief word on a bill, the Labor HS, HHS bill, that has opioid funding in it. And there's considerable money there, four-plus billion dollars, deeply needed. I think everybody in this room is concerned about the spread of troublesome opioid addiction. And in 2016, 165 people died from opioid-related problems, 165. Let me also say a word, if I might, about the Royal Oak Community Coalition. I hope some of you, if not all of you, have been involved with it. It was 25 years ago that Rob Portman, who was then on the Ways and Means Committee, as I was, a Republican from Cincinnati, and I compared notes about his experiences and mine. His were with Cincinnati as a whole, the county. Mine began with the Troy Community Coalition. And we decided the success in those two coalitions was such that we should try to nurture the efforts in other places in this country to drug, to address drug problems. So off we started 25 years ago, and introduced legislation that was passed, and there was appropriated $10 million as seed money for community coalitions. About 10 years ago, one here received seed money, and it expired a year ago. But they utilized those funds to address problems of drug abuse in this community very effectively. And after that funding lapsed, they continued to raise some funds and also received $30,000 from the county. So I just wanted to suggest to you, there was a proposal to eliminate the funding for the anti-drug, community anti-drug programs, but the legislature on a very bipartisan basis rejected that proposal of the administration. And so the funding has continued. Let me just say a brief word about NIH funding, because that also became controversial. And there was some proposal from the administration to reduce it. And again, on a bipartisan basis, there was a decision to continue it and really expand it. And I believe everybody here in this community, of which I'm a part, is thankful for the work that's being done by HIS and the research that's going on in this country. Some of us have been friends for a long time, if I might add a note. And I think we can be thankful for this country being a leader in health, in the effort to have health research. Just a brief word on CDBG, which has often been another controversial subject within the Congress. There again was a proposal to eliminate it. And on a bipartisan basis, we decided otherwise. And I just want to say, as a resident here, but even if I weren't, I think this community should be proud of its use of CDBG funds. You've used them for senior facilities and senior projects. And I think for those who live here and who go to the community center, they're thankful to this, this community for using funds in that way. Also, they've been used for housing rehab. And this community also has taken the lead in rehabilitation of housing in this community to the advantage, I think, of everybody in this community. So as I close, I just, my career here, I wanted to congratulate this community. And to close also with this, there's been more and more attention to the need for career and technical education. I just came from a celebration of 75 years at Oakland University. And with some leadership that started in Lansing and Governor Millican, against whom I ran, and I worked together to provide funding for Oakland U., then part of MSU. It has sprouted, and it's prospered. But we have sometimes overlooked the need for career and technical education. And so in the bill that passed, this HHS labor bill, there's over a billion dollars to provide funding to communities to really expand career and technical education. And that's been another fruit of our working together to try to meet the needs of our citizenry. So let me just close by thanking you for the opportunities we've had to interact, to work together, to exchange points of view. This community, I think, has reason to be proud of the leadership that has come from this organization, this institution. I know there are times controversial issues. That's part of democracy. But I've known the leadership here for four decades. And I am proud now to be a citizen of this community, a vibrant democratic institution with a small d, and a vibrant business community, a vibrant educational place. And so I just want to close by thanking you for this opportunity and to say to you, carry on. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Levin. Congressman Levin, thank you for the update, and thank you for your decades of public service. And we know that as your career in the US Congress is coming to an end, we know every day you're continuing to work for us and the City of Royal Oak and for your constituents that you represent. You're a tremendous example for all political leaders, past, present, and future. So thank you. Okay, who wants to follow that? Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. I've had better days health-wise, so I appreciate your calling me first.
I want to start by saying that tonight I want to, everyone-
Mr. Wolf, can you get your name and address for the record, please?
Ronald Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. I want to start by saying everyone here knows what I'm against. So I'd like to tell you today what I'm for. First, one of my favorite poets, artists, intellectuals, John Ruskin, said, "Any jackass can kick down a barn, but it takes a good carpenter to build one." City Hall is being kicked down. What is going to be put in its place? That is my question today. We're going through a lot of expense and money to take it down, but I'd like to see something that's worth something put in its place. John Ruskin also said, "When we build, let us build, think that we build forever. Let us not be, let it not be for present delight nor for our present use alone. Let it be such a work as our descendants will look upon us with praise and to make, and thanksgiving in their hearts." Now, why is a fountain so important? And by the way, November 3rd, there's going to be another meeting. And by the way, people tend to vote just on the picture. I went to school, NYU, Washington Square, and I think I spoke before how much I enjoyed the fountain and how it was, it provided a focal point for the entire village community, both east and west, Village, SoHo, NoHo, whatever. Everybody loved that fountain. Moving waters calm the mind and energize the spirit. Today, also, Royal Oak, by the way, spends a lot of money on special events. A beautiful central fountain, in its daily operation, will make every day a special event when it's, as it's, for people that can pass through our park. I, I can see it surrounded by music. I can see it also being used as an adjunct for the farmer's market, maybe by adding carts and whatever around it. I can see it as a community meeting place. Now, let me see here. Star Dream. Star Dream was built with love. People that built Star Dream contributed their private funds. Corporations contributed generously. And you can see it in the plaque around the plaza. Since Star Dream, Royal Oak has doubled in population. I can see this city deserves a lot more today. And I think a beautiful park will unite the community and give us the spirit that we need to make this an even better community than it has ever been, with, and its symbol being a downtown central park we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right. Any hands? I think I see, is that Ms. Donigan back there? Of course, it's Ms. Donigan. You guys are right.
I am Marie Donigan, 503 Poplar, and I'm here to, well, you probably know why I'm here to speak. So I just want to say that improving public transit, as I've said a million times, is important for Royal Oak residents. Because we don't have public transit here in Royal Oak to speak of, we've made it so residents have to drive a car to get fresh food, to access healthcare, to go to church on Sunday, to get to restaurants downtown. Or if they don't drive, they have to do all their business before 3:00 PM on a weekday or hail an expensive ride because they have few other options. So the Royal Oak Public Transit Village, combined with state and federal funds and funds from our partner, Smart, will allow the city to expand senior curb-to-curb service to include weekdays, weeknights, and weekends, making trips without a car to the farmer's market, grocery stores, and doctor's appointments. The plan is really, really simple. The 14-page report is, with pictures and graphs and budgets, is on the city's website. So there'll be 14 new accessible buses that will be paid for by the Smart Bus System. They'll circulate through Royal Oak on two new routes, seven days a week. They'll circulate through Royal Oak on two new routes, seven days a week, nights and weekends, with 15-minute frequencies. Smart will then expand their Main Street bus route, the one that currently exists, to include the same days, hours, and frequencies so that Royal Oak residents can have a seamless experience while traveling between Somerset Mall, the Detroit Zoo, and all the destinations in between. Royal Oak Public Transit will connect residents to a ballgame, the D I A, or other regional destinations on the Woodward Fast Bus. So Royal Oak voters have a long, long history of support for public transportation. A survey circulated last March indicated that Royal Oak residents would use a transit system that was frequent, covered the entire city, and connected them to local destinations and the Woodward Fast Bus. Frequency drives ridership, which is why Woodward Fast Bus ridership has increased more than 30% since it started last January, and it's why the task force made sure that the plan they put together focused on frequency and that it covered the entire city and made all the connections to Royal Oak destinations. We wanted to make sure that Royal Oak Public Transit would do all of that and would make Royal Oak a great place to grow old in, something that we all care about. Royal Oak seniors, young people, students, Boys and Girls Club members, people who have medical appointments, and people who can't drive, shouldn't drive, or don't want to drive deserve more options and the choice to leave their cars at home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donigan. If this is an auction, we would have had a really high bid here. All right, I see a gentleman here on the edge.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner, my name is Sam Ahmad, owner of Beirut Palace on Main Street. Beirut Palace opened in early 1997 in downtown Royal Oak. My brother and I established this location while making many friends. Later Beirut Palace had become a landmark in the city of Royal Oak. The business continued to grow and we worked hard to keep it strong. In early May of 2018, we began to notice an approximate 25 to 30 downfall of our sales. Our sales kept dropping throughout the summer and our downfall has grown to more than 50%. We also noticed a huge difference in our carryout business, whose sales were also dropping. When a guest visits our restaurant for dine-in or carryout, they complain they have been circling the area and cannot find a convenient place to park and pick up their order. After we deeply thought about this, my family and I decided to relocate the business and move out of Royal Oak. This decision took a great amount of time, as my family has made many friends in Royal Oak who contributed to the success of the business and to the good reputation of our name. We had great relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, the Police Department, and business owners and residents of the city. However, it's been the actions of this commission, the mayor and the city manager, that has resulted in Beirut Palace moving out of Royal Oak to a nearby city so I can support my family. You've closed most convenient parking, given away more than $6 million to a private developer, and promised taxpayers the office building would generate $234 million in taxes every year. Now tax-exempt, Henry Ford will be in the building. There will be no diners and no taxes as a result of your short-sighted planning. Royal Oak taxpayers deserves better.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, everybody's out of order. We don't, we don't clap after public comment. You know what? Man, you're out of order. You know what? Mr. Wolf, you're out of order. You know what the rules are here at the City Commission. Everybody has a right to speak. Everybody has a right to be heard. And those who clap sometimes intimidate the others, others from expressing their viewpoint. Now, sir, I just want to correct you on one thing. Henry Ford Hospital Health Systems will be paying property tax, so that information that you have is incorrect in that regard. Yeah, the landlord will be paying it. So, Mr. Wolf, you're out of order, sir. Please, have respect for this body. This isn't our meeting. This is the meeting, Mr. Wolf. Please. Civility. And the plaque here on the back.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Tom Hallick. I live 210 North Center. First off, I hadn't planned on mentioning this because I didn't know you were going to do it. I'd like to commend you for handing out service pins for public service. One of my little treasures is a 40-year pin I received from the United States Postal Service three years before I retired. I highly recommend it. It's a good policy. I'm here to urge no votes on both of the millages, the, for the following reasons on the transit millage. There's no determined stops. What it will provide keeps changing if you read, "Connect Royal Oak." No safety stop equipment, which makes it unsafe for children. Nobody has to stop when the kids get off the bus. It's $360 per student on top of taxes. The buses are small. They will not be able to accommodate anywhere near enough of the kids if they start using them. Your children will end up standing at a curb waiting for another bus. There are no ridership estimates provided at all. There's been no discussion of handicap accessibility. Their total cost per passenger determination is, who knows? The ballot language asks for $15 million, but it doesn't specify how it's going to be used, which makes it essentially a $15 million blank check. And that's not a way to proceed, and I've sat at that table before. On the sidewalk millage, just a note to folks, now that you've paid for replacement of the sidewalk in front of your house, the commission wants you to pay for everybody else's and for bonus, and you will not receive a refund for what you have already paid for. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hallick. I see the rules only apply to a few. Mr. Schneider. Mr. Wolf, you're out of order. I'm going to pause this meeting if I have to remind you again. Okay?
This sign is part of my First Amendment free speech, by the way. And I understand showing it to some members on this commission and the mayor, showing the sign to you, it's like showing a cross to a vampire. So you voted, the majority on this commission...
Mr. Schneider, we do need your name and address for the record.
Alex Schneider, 1010. You voted to put these two proposals on the ballot, knowing full well that sidewalk proposal, when people just paid for the sidewalks, is absolutely ridiculous. These proposals are reprehensible, reprehensible to this community. And here's why. They polarize the community. And you are responsible for it. Yes, Mr. Mayor, you are. You polarize the community. I went to one of the informational meetings conducted by Ms. Donigan, who is pushing this proposal for the transit system. And I asked her a question. And the question was actually relayed to her by my father. And he wanted to ask her, what would he do if he's a senior citizen? He would have to walk up to half a mile to a bus stop, wait up to half an hour in pouring rain, scorching sun, snowy weather, blizzards, board the bus only to be dropped off somewhere, walk to the supermarket for another 10 minutes perhaps. He usually buys four bags of groceries. There would be ice cream in there, chicken. And then he has to reverse the entire procedure. Okay? So he would have to walk to the bus stop. He would have to wait to up to half an hour. He would have to be dropped off and walk up to half a mile to his home. And this is what he said to me. If I have to go through this, I will be dead. I will drop dead. What was the response of Ms. Donigan when I asked her that question?
Mr. Schneider, can I have you move the sign down just a little bit, please?
Ms. Donigan told me, "Tell your father not to ride the bus." And that is the point. Seniors would not be able to use this service because they simply would lack the stamina to complete the journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Who's next?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I am Brandon Collo, 600 East Hudson Avenue. Thank you for the news media for coming out because I have some really exciting library news to announce, so I'm sure they want to cover it tonight. I'm here as the library board member. We want to alert the public that we've moved the Dropbox that used to be on 11 Mile Road. That's moved to this new parking lot between the police station and library. It's temporarily relocated there while the city and D I A work on improving our 11 Mile entrance. Over the next month and a half or so, you'll see improvements made that will result in the opening of that entrance again. It's been closed since the renovation, so we're pretty excited to get that back open to the public here. So in the interim, we want to advise residents to please access that Dropbox off of Troy Street and continue to patronize us. Speaking of residents coming down, this summer was a record-breaking year for summer reading. We had more children come out this year than any year before. Over 1,500 young kids participated in summer reading, which is just amazing. About 8,700 hours of books were read to children over the summer for the youngest readers who can't read for themselves but their parents are helping them. And then we had about 263,000 minutes of booktime read and logged this summer. So thank you to our staff. We have a great children's services staff to put it on, but thank you to the children of Royal Oak. I know when I was a kid, I wasn't doing much reading during the summer, so good for you for keeping that up. That's really commendable. A couple more things we have going on this week with Halloween. We have some fun programs going on Thursday night at 7:00 P.M. And I can't believe they're going to make me say this. We have the Spooky Kooky Michigan, Michigan History of Supernatural Strangeness. That's at 7:00 P.M., hosted by John Tenney. That'll be in the auditorium. Come check out the super fun stuff that happens in the dark in Michigan. And then a family event on Saturday. Bring your kids out. We're doing the Fun-Tastic Halloween, R O P L style. We'll have parades, crafts, and games for children and families of all ages. And then last but not least, this week is National Friends of the Library Week. I've said it before, I'll say again, the Friends of the Royal Oak Public Library really drive almost everything we do there. They raise about $40,000 annually to, to all the programs like summer reading or the spooky kooky Michigan supernatural stuff. And they raise that $40,000, about 25 cents at a time through used book sales. So we want to thank them for, once again, all that they do for us.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Collo? Yeah, Mr. Collo, I do have a question.
Yes.
You said in your statement that the library had record attendance for kids programming this summer?
We did. We had over 1,500 kids, which is more than any year that we've been doing this.
Okay. Even though the library parking lot's been under construction, you guys saw an uptick in visitors? Ladies and gentlemen...
And it did surprise us all also. We had many conversations at the board level about it. We were concerned about it. Clearly, we've lost a lot of parking there, and that was a concern. But our staff did a great job. Maybe the kids drove there, I don't know, but...
Any rate, it's good to hear that our kids are reading more, and we commend the Royal Oak Public Library for all the work they do. So thank you.
And actually, Mr. Mayor, as I have another moment, we have our library director here. We're in the middle of finding her replacement right now. Mary has announced her retirement, so I just want to thank her publicly for all that she's done, and we're going to miss her a lot.
Yeah, this is really sad news. Is there nothing we can do to talk you into staying, Mary?
We have until March 1st.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Gibbs.
Mr. Collo, I have a question. Are the two events that the libraries, our library is holding on Thursday and Saturday, are they free?
Yes, of cour-, all events at the library for your charge, ma'am.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, thank you for bringing that out. Yep, we, once again, through generous donations, through the Friends of the Royal Public Library, were able to pay on all these programs without charge.
Can you let us know what the events are once again, Mr. Collo?
Yes, sir, I can. Spooky Kooky Michigan, Michigan History of Supernatural Strangeness, and the Fun-Tastic Halloween.
Thank you. I'd ask you again later, so I appreciate it. All right, I see a hand way in the back. I can't see a face, but I can see a hand. Oh, Mr. Ashley.
Yes. I bring good news. Thank you. I read in here that the traffic committee, after my screaming and yelling for so many months, has approved two islands that will slow down traffic at Sixth and Seventh, which is grateful for the people at Royal Oak Manor. It will help us cross the street. The only concern a lot of us have is they wish that you would put up pedestrian lights like they have in Clausen on 14 Mile Road. Would really help with crossing the street because I, I know they slow down, but the problem is, will they stop? That's the biggest problem we have is, will they stop? And we're more concerned of them stopping than slowing down because I have been out there where I have been missed by six inches. I've been cursed, spit at because I was crossing the road. So I am thankful for the islands, and it will be much appreciated for us. But again, if it could be pushed to get those pedestrian lights in like they have on 14, that would really help us and protect the seniors and everybody crossing there. Even though there has been a holdup in the construction of the, whatever it's going to be across in that big parking lot, hopefully there'll be some more stores and stuff that will be there and will draw more people down to that end. That will be needed down there. So I'm just thankful for the City Commission, for all the committees that I've been at, screaming and yelling, for two commissioners, Hunter, Commissioner Gibbs, Commissioner Ovitz, for helping me getting this through. I really thank you a lot. And the people at Royal Oak Manor, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. All right, who's next? See a hand right here in the middle? Mr. Regan, is that you?
Good evening. My name's Tom Regan. I live at 3126 Glenview, and I'm here to speak in defense of transit and sidewalks. And I find this whole conversation a little bizarre, the, sort of the enthusiastic hatred. I grew up in South St. Louis, working-class neighborhood. Our family, we had six kids in one car. So if we wanted to go somewhere, we walked, or we rode our bike, or we took the bus. And I see this enthusiastic hatred for all three here, and it's strange to me. It's, I guess you have to move to a wealthy suburb to see that "I got mine, hell with you" attitude. It's disconcerting. But when I grew up, I took the bus everywhere. It was very liberating. I took it to work, I took it to school, I played football, and when I had a football game, I put my duffel bag on my shoulder and I took the bus to the football game. And so did all the other kids. It was just a natural thing. We looked at transit and sidewalks and bicycling as parts of the infrastructure just as important as streetlights and streets and stop signs and water and sewage. It's just something people need to get by. Not everybody can drive. Some people can't afford a car. Some people are too young. Some people have limited eyesight, and they need other ways to get around. And providing for those folks is just a decent thing to do. And this enthusiastic hatred for those things, it's bizarre to me. One line of attack that you hear against the bus system is it's not safe, which is completely strange. And I just wonder if the people making these claims have any connection to reality at all. Riding transit is much safer than driving. That's not even my opinion. That's a statement of fact. And if you're talking about safety in terms of crime, I mean, I've ridden transit over 1,000 times in my life. I haven't counted. Never witnessed a crime, and I've been all over on transit riding. over on transit riding, D-dot buses in Detroit, around St. Louis. I worked as a community organizer going through low-income neighborhoods. Never had a problem. And when I hear people talk about transit as unsafe for kids, it strikes me as very bizarre. But anyways, thank you for putting this on the ballot. I think people in Royal Oak deserve a chance to vote on it, and I hope people vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. All right, I can't tell, can, I mean, I know everyone wants to hold up their beautiful orange and white sign, but who wants, I can't see who wants to speak tonight. Okay, I see a hand right here in the middle. Yes, weight moving. Is that Mr. Skinner? I can't see very well.
Hello, my name is Mike Skinner. I live at 130 East Sunnybrook. Glad to be here tonight, glad to see the differences of opinion. I'm certainly here to support. I've been here many times and fought for no sidewalks on my street and it was overruled, and they've came down. And I really think that, once again, you see that the city isn't listening. And that is borne out by the number of people that have joined the group here to really step up and say that the way the city commission and the proposals on the ballot here today are in place make us look like we're stupid or morons, and we're not. We are people that have thought about all the things we want here in Royal Oak, and we disagree with a lot of the things that the commission has put in place. We disagree that when we have two new members on there, that it takes three to put a new initiative on the ballot. We think that, in certain ways, that you treat us as deplorables, and we're people with different opinions on this whole matter here. And to hit people like myself who are getting a large bill from the sidewalks and getting on in their lives that want to retire and live here and be happy in Royal Oak with more taxes is ridiculous. And that all the money that's being spent on the city and downtown here should be going out to the suburbs that are the outskirts of Royal Oak. And I hope that in the future, as you weigh these proposals and as our citizens weigh their vote here, that they really look to try to do things that are supportive of people that aren't downtown. And from a sidewalk point of view, I grew up in Royal Oak with six brothers and sisters, and we walked and rode bikes. And I don't know if the whole proposals, you know, if everything goes together. It seems like they're all disparate sort of ideas that sound like they're really good for the community. I live right off of Main Street, north of 13 Mile Road, and I'm leaving the city because I've sort of had enough and I love Royal Oak for many years. But one of the things I found with the great ideas that we have now, where we have a single lane and a bike lane going down there, that I haven't seen one bike since that's put in place, not even one. I've seen multiple bikes...
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Skinner has the floor.
Riding on sidewalks and riding there. And now, with a bus coming up that street now, there's one lane and a bike lane. A bus is going to stop at multiple stops along the way. And so what do the cars do? Just wait for that bus to transit up and down the streets? And I don't know if anyone's anticipated that. If so, I haven't heard about it. So I think a better planning, listening to people, like I've said that I don't think you listen enough, and I hope you do. And I do appreciate your public service. I think it's an important part of the community, and I have no mean spirits for anybody, but I really think we have a lot of great people here and that you should take the time to listen to each and every one of us. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Plakta. I'm at 2621 Bembridge Road, and this is...
Jacob, and this is my brother Gabe. Hello.
Anyway, I just want to commend you guys then. Having the proposals on the ballot, both for the sidewalk and for the public transit, we live at 13 Mile Road, just south of it, on Bembridge. And so many times, we want to come down to downtown Royal Oak, me and my partner, and we can't walk, it's too long. We've tried that. We've ridden a bike, and it's still a little bit too far. The idea to walk to the bus, walk to the corner, hop on a bus, take these two guys, put our bikes on it, and go downtown for dinner or for lunch and come back is extremely exciting to us. They had some ideas themselves. And then I just want to talk about this Uber/Cheryet thing. I'm not against it, I think it's great for seniors, but twice I wanted to take an Uber for an airport, and the, both Ubers canceled on their way to my house in the morning, and I was stra-, I didn't know how to. Not that we're going to have public transit to the airport, but it's not completely reliable. And just today, my partner is in Beaumont with E. coli, unfortunately, and his sister is here from Salt Lake City, and she was going to take an Uber, and the Uber canceled, and she freaked out about getting to the airport. Ubers are not the mea culpa, it's not the perfect thing, you know? And a little public transportation to have us a little enjoying our community, I think is great. You guys got anything to say?
Um, yeah, since, since we are not really old enough to drive and we want to just get on the bus sometime and go meet up with our friends when we're a little older, we can't do that because we're too young to drive. If I have anything to say?
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Plakta.
And it's for everyone, and thank you.
Thank you, boys.
You're precious.
All right.
Hi, my name is Terry Myers, 1915 Rowland Avenue. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. After reviewing the proposal, not the ballot, for the public transit millage, which is for five years, I see that the city has no definite plans of where the stops would be, what time the buses would run, et cetera. Three minutes is not enough time to explain all the other reasons why this transit millage is wrong. I will say, there are no plans at all, and yet you are asking for the Royal Oak taxpayers to approve this millage. I cannot honestly say that I feel comfortable giving the city a blank check with the intent of determining a plan sometime next year. I hope the taxpayers are aware that this millage would generate $15 million with over a half million going to administrative salary. I am voting no on the transit proposal, and I encourage other taxpayers to do the same. I will also be voting no on the sidewalk millage. I would rather pay for my sidewalk replacement if I need it, not my neighbors, or Beaumont, or any other tax-exempt entity, and especially not for six years. I encourage a no vote on both the transit millage and the sidewalk millage. And lastly, I would like to say to everyone, the sleeping giant has awakened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. All right, who's next? Yes, sir. Actually, I believe this microphone works right here as well. You got it, Commissioner, right, sir?
Well, we'll see. Thank you very much. My name is Arnie Gwynblatt. I live at 100 West Fifth Street. I'm here to talk about the procedure right now to get permits for construction, for modifications, and it's just frankly taking too long. I have some recommendations. Right now, I, my builder has submitted a permit on the Fifth, and I called today to find out the status of it, and it has not been heard yet. And the lady who I spoke to could not give me a timeline, and it's really frustrating. I do believe that permits should be separated by the size of the building, or whether it's renovation, or whether it's a home. We should not be pulled into one category, and that's what's happening right now. It's, I'm sitting in a docket, and I don't know where it's going to lead to. And it makes me very nervous, too. I'm, as you can see, I'm in a wheelchair, and I need a lot of modifications to my condominium. And I have to rent temporarily at a different location that meets my needs, and my lease will expire on January 1st, January 31st. And then I have an option to either extend it for one month or extend it for two months, and I must decide by November 30th. And I don't know where I'm, where things are going to take place. So I hope that with all the explosion of business taking place in Royal Oak, that maybe they can segregate the large businesses that are being built from the small homes that need to modify, be modified, maybe bring in some more technology. Right now, I know that the builder had to bring his blueprints over to the city. You know, I think it would be a wise investment, maybe, to spend $5,000 on an architectural printer and let the printers submit their blueprints online, as many cities do. And the city is great and is blossoming, but it's also going to, needs to be changed. Any change, any questions?
No, I think, I think, Arnie, we did get your messages.
Right.
And it's on the agenda tonight to talk about.
Right.
You know, I know I asked the city manager, what is the policy? What are the issues that, you know, prevent us from making certain priorities? And so we had a policy that just really didn't accommodate these things, so we're here to discuss about it. So we do appreciate you bringing it to our attention so we can have a discussion and take action, so.
Right. And first come, first served may serve us, serve our purpose in some areas, but, you know, just like in Beaumont Hospital, when you go into an emergency room and you've got somebody with a gunshot wound, they're not sitting there saying, "Well, there's 10 people in front of you."
Yep.
So I'm hoping that there'd be some changes there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see a hand in the back corner. Hey, Randy? Get the little feedback there.
Ryan Niner, I live at 324 Wayland Avenue in Royal Oak. I want to ask or complain about the new section of Main Street. We spent a lot of money on that section. I like the fact that maybe the bike lanes and you've got at least a wider lane for the cars than you had before, but you put all that money in the road bed and you didn't finish the road bed, right? It's got holes in it all the way down the middle, all the way down from 12 to 13 Mile. You had sent out a crew to put cold patch in there. That's ridiculous. It's, you paid all that money for that striping, all the time and effort, and what do you do? You never finished the road bed, right? And how long will it be? I don't think it'll survive the winter. It'll be torn out because of the, the water's going to get in the cracks. You need to seal the darn road. Nobody sealed it. I can't believe we're spending money and wasting it like that. Then the other thing you did, you made it easy for the bikes to be safe with their own lane. Now you reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. Now traffic backs up. Thanks. Why do we have it, you made it easy for, and safe for the bikes. I bike, I've biked 15,000 miles in my lifetime across the USA, right? Always came back to Michigan, it's the worst place to bike because cars don't, will run you off the road. But what you have is not, and the right-hand lane, when it rains, fills with water. Great, you're going to have the bike in it? You're going to have leaves in it? I can already see that occurring. It's not going to work. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Niner. Who's next?
Mr. Wayron, 702 Irving. Over a month ago, I pointed out to John Johnson that there was a trip and fall hazard where the nice new walkway from the library parking lot to the library walkway was there. His only answer was, "We're going to replace it in a year." Well, the city pays hundreds of thousands of dollars for trip and fall over the years, and it's going to take a bucket of salt, or I meant bucket of sand and a trowel and a guy to work maybe 45 minutes. It makes no sense at all that a, a walking hazard has been pointed out and the city just ignores it. Of course, you do a lot of things like that. Farmers market this last Saturday and Sunday, when the door was open, there was, you know, again, there was like about this much people were tripping over. Why can't the city pay attention to minor things like this? I mean, he was talking about roads. Well, I'm talking about something that people also use all the time and need it to be safe. And for that reason, I'm asking that you do something about this Civic Center project, that you give us a report on where we are. There's a rumor going around that the police station and the city hall are going to be flipped, and the, and the city hall is, you're saying that it will not be...
It's a rumor. It's not true.
Can you tell us when the city hall is actually going to start? We don't get anything. We just, we just have to hope you're going to do it right, and the hope is kind of faint, actually. So I would like, so can I ask that question?
The timeline hasn't been compromised at all. We actually have some things that we're going to be approving tonight for contracts, so...
Well, I'm not talking about contracts, I'm talking about fencing off the city hall thing. I mean, I'm not totally against it because if you put off the police station until next, next spring, we get a whole winter of the largest parking area. But we also have to, we have to use it, and from the work being done on the south end, it just isn't, it isn't very good, and it isn't very thoughtful of our needs. And I wish that somebody would actually do a, you know, would, would actually walk around, try the things, and say, "This doesn't work, we need some plywood on the ground here." And if you, you know, no wonder people don't want to pay for sidewalks. You just don't plan, you just simply do it. And it's do it for the project rather than do it for, for the needs of the public. And it's time to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayron. I just say, I think we've heard about communication regarding the Civic Center project, that we've got, you know, rethinkro.com, where you can sign up with your email for regular updates on a very regular basis as the project advances. So I mean, that's, you can opt in to have those updates come directly to you every time the project moves forward. There's a, there's a running meter about the status of the project as well as a schedule of what's going to be done. So that is all available at rethinkro.com, which we've been pretty aggressively promoting so folks can get the information they need. There's also an area there, too, to submit your suggestions, so not just speaking to the city manager, but they get directly recorded and addressed in the appropriate way, so...
But if you get suggestions and nobody does anything about it, what's good?
Well, I, I don't know that. We'll have a conversation with Mr. Johnson and find out, but I'm just letting everyone know, you don't have to call up the city manager. You can put it in there, and it goes to a panel that looks at it and works fast to get those things responded to.
Well, I actually talked to him. He was coming out of the city hall, and I got his, and I actually said, "Please come over here and look, show him that," because, you know, a lot of people use that walkway, and as I said, slipping falls or tripping falls are going to cost, cost the city money, and...
I mean, we want to be made aware of those things, so don't stop, you know, bringing them to our attention.
Yeah, well...
Thank you, Mr. Wayron. Is that Mr. Kralowski? Sorry, I saw you sit right down. I couldn't resist to make you stand right back up.
Rick Kralowski, 419 Virginia. I guess we got whittied out, so I won't be on the 6 o'clock news. I'm going to talk about the transit plan, and for one thing, I'm getting a really little tired of every time somebody has opposition to another millage proposal, it's because we're hateful. Yeah, we're hateful. We don't know what we're doing, we're just mean and vicious. We're, this straw man has already come out as, "You're against public transit." We're not against public transit, we're against this transit plan, which is overly expensive, is linked to a standard fixed route bus system... is linked to a standard fixed route bus system, which is old technology. It's being promoted, I mean, it's, there's, we had the, the initial project was pulled out, and ever since then, on the, on the new Connect Royal website, we now have ride home after hours from downtown. Where the hell did that money come from? Because it wasn't in their initial proposal. We now have on-demand senior bus service. No, you're supposed to do make a reservation, but apparently we have money for that now. We had, let's see, no one, and on the, when that committee was up, Lufthansa Uber, who have revolutionized the way transportation is done, never even made a presentation. They weren't even asked as to what they could do. Okay? There's a, no one bothered to do any research. Austin, Texas is getting rid of their bus system. They're putting in a on-call, $30,000 a year on a city that's twice the size of Royal Oak, area-wise, I don't know what population is, area-wise. And that's not exactly a conservative town. It's a, it's a college town and very liberal in Texas. Oh, we're going to, we're going to increase senior transit of the millage 10%. Wow, the seniors will get $1.5 million out of $15 million over their five years. $80,000 a year is going to marketing. Now, if this plan is so wanted, why are you, do we need $80,000 a year to tell people it's around? I don't get that. Okay? So, let's see. Yeah, again, it's not that we're against a, some kind of an upgrade to public transit, but this is a bad plan. And a bad, and no plan is much better than bad plans. Let's reject this and get stuff done correctly, not just for another public, public works project with SMART. Let's get smart about how we're going to do this. Thank you.
Mr. Karlowsky, just a quick question.
Yeah.
Appreciate you expressing your thoughts, since we're breaking all the protocol here with public comment tonight. You know this is up for a vote to the voters, right?
I do.
Do you trust the voters will make a right decision?
As soon as, if they know what the, what the actual facts are. However, if the city is going to spend $10,000 to give out a, $10,000 of my tax money, by the way, anything that we, we have, we have to raise on our own as a promotional guide for this, then I have a little bit of a problem with it.
So you don't trust?
I didn't say that.
Okay, do you?
Yes.
Okay, you do trust. Okay, thank you.
I also know that, you know, your particular proposal, the proposal language that you have on it, is wide open. It's a $15 million blank check. So I trust the people to be able to see that and vote it down.
And you're making your case to voters, so thank you. Mr. Harrison.
729 Trafford, thanks for waiting until the TV cameras were gone.
Did you get a camera shy, Mr. Harrison? Because you're on camera right now.
You can read between the lines. Tonight's subject is ROGO, of course, otherwise known as MDEP. It's Marie Donigan Employment Plan. The ballot proposal, millage of up to 1.25 mils for five years. Nothing ends in five years in politics. You're going to be up for renewal after five years, you know that. Scope to defray the costs of establishing, operating, and maintenance of public transit system in the city of Royal Oak. Wide open. There is no defined plan. The commission has total flexibility in determining what will be implemented, and the commission is bound only by the language on the ballot. Task Force Report, fares are set to generate 5% of annual operating costs. Who in their right mind would go into business with projected sales only covering 5% of operating costs? Ludicrous. The other 95% will come from other tax-based sources. We talked about the schools, the DDA, millage, who knows? As Margaret Thatcher said, socialism works only until you run out of other people's money. The task force worked seven months and worked only with SMART for curb-to-curb service. The elderly and handicapped are not going to walk a half a mile to a bus stop and wait up to a half an hour for a bus. Clark Campbell, within a few weeks, has identified plans operating in other states that provide a service with a door-to-door component and at a lesser cost than the SMART curb-to-curb concept. You socialists only want control of movements such as your PC, control of our language, control of our speech, with admonishments to be civil? Well, you raised your voices in anger when Melanie Macy wanted to amend the budget to provide better park service, or park maintenance. You would prefer that we all ride the buses and bicycles while you impede traffic flow. One commissioner, not too long ago, said, we don't want cars in downtown. It's all about control. A major second-tier supplier involved in the development of autonomous vehicles said he looks forward to the day when no, when no one will own a car and all transportation will be on a demand basis. It is scary that someday we may not have total control over our destination. Does Orwell's 1984 come to mind? Vote no on the transit millage. There is no defined plan, and what has been discussed is ill-conceived. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison, I have to say, I'm a little disappointed. Mr. Karlowsky came up here and gave a pretty passionate speech, saying if you're against the millage, you know, proposals, that it's not about hatred, it's not about being mean, we just have a different point of view. And I have to say, I'm very disappointed that you took a jab at Ms. Donigan on some unfounded claims. And to hear others clap and chuckle, I find it to be disappointing. Well, there you go. Point underscored. Thank you.
That's fine. You have your own opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Who's next?
Hennessy 258, East 12 My Road, Royal Oak. I would just like to let our veterans, and especially our handicapped veterans, know that the ramp to the Vietnam, to the veterans monument has been opened up for use, for their use. It was closed up with the fencing from the building going up over here. I'd like to thank the DDA for seeing that it was taken care of, because we had gotten quite a few complaints from the veterans that they weren't able to get up there, up the ramp. And I'd like to thank Worry Free for putting all the mums up in front of the monument. It looks great. They always do a great job. And just a little comment, I am guessing their flower boxes that they are building by Farmers Market and the courthouse, or also for the rainwater. But I don't understand, with all the construction that's going to be going on over there, you would be doing that now. It's going to get ruined. And I was in construction for 25 years, and I wouldn't be putting that up until after my buildings were done. So I don't know why you're doing that and why you're spending our money, but I don't think it's right. And then I would also like to say, please vote no on the proposals on November 6th. Maybe if and when the task force gets everything in order, it might be a good idea to have a better transit system. But until they, the task force completes a plan, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hennessy. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
We have quite a meeting tonight. I thought it was government by the people and for the people. Seems like it's rules by the monarchy for the peasants. It's okay for people to clap for a congressman, but it gets called if it clapped for somebody else. It's okay to defend one person, but come to the aid of another. And I'm glad the city manager and others are taking notes. That's really great. It'd be outstanding if you published those notes so that we could see them. But you got a new parking promo doc out that really is another part of these mistruths. Doesn't project the losses for city hall or the police station on here. It miscalculates, at least by this morning, it says that there's four handicap parking spots in the west Farmers Market. I was over there, there's none. But it's on your document you're handing out. You also have on here that you can park at Superior Fish and Royal Oak Church. I haven't seen any agreements from this commission or the city with those entities. Do you have the legal right to tell everybody that they can park there? Yep, and more businesses closing, right? We got Beirut Palace, Pology. You'll see on the internet, freshies already trying to flip hands because they don't have any business. But yet, all the bright minds here understand what these businesses need and where the parking is. I heard you on the podcast and on your radio presentation, elementary schools have increased enrollment. That's great. You never know what you'll find at an elementary school either. The silver tsunami you talked about, well, one sure way to stop that is to increase taxes, pass more millages, and you'll have a lot less seniors, which is exactly where you guys are going. And then it was interesting to highlight your podcast, where you highlighted your treasury officer background, but you neglected to talk about how you helped put the company into bankruptcy, or your failed business in Rochester. Improving public transit is important to a lot of people. A foolish transit millage with $15 million that guarantees nothing is just that stupid. Unless you get a six-figure job out of it. That millage will provide 600,000 Uber rides at $25 apiece to the residents of Royal Oak. You don't have to maintain anything, you don't have to support anything, they just show up. And if you're looking for options, Ford recently launched a go-ride system that Dan Gilbert's engaging in downtown Detroit. You ought to consider some of those things. People already know how to do it better, and they're already doing it. But again, the monarchy for the peasants, because a fool is described as one who is deficient in judgment, deficient in sense, and deficient in understanding. I'll let you guys figure out which one of you fall into that category. You excel at pay-to-play, untruthful propaganda, burning our tax dollars, taking money from developers and Rizzo, and fiscal failure. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. I see another popular slew of insults is applauded for. Who's next?
It's called being out of order, ma'am.
Janice Wagman, 600 Wellesley. Janice Wagman, 600 Wellesley. Short. Okay. First to the voters. The ballot language says only transit system.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me? Okay, is that better? Can I start over?
Yeah, you can start over. We'll give you 20 extra seconds there.
Thank you.
There we go. Reset.
Voters, the ballot language says only transit system. City Commissioner Perusha stated we could use SMART or switch to something like VIA. The mayor has stated nothing is set in stone, we are not fixed into fixed routes. Commissioner Douglas stated the words fixed route seem too limiting. Commissioner Dubach stated he did not want to be locked into a fixed route system and prevent experimentation. Commissioners Gibb and Levaser also did not want the fixed route language. Voters, I ask yourself, what are you voting for? The city commission has the final say on how to spend your $15 million, not you. To seniors, despite what you have been told, this ballot proposal does not provide on-demand service. You will not be able to call for pickup and have someone arrive at your door unless you make a reservation at least two days in advance. The $250,000 mentioned by the task force could easily come from the city's surplus without raising your taxes. To parents, the task force proposal is not school buses, but small buses with no school oversight or monitoring, and will cost you $360 per year, per student, on top of your increased taxes. To Beaumont employees, if Beaumont thinks it's so important for you to vote for this millage, why didn't they offer to help support it? And finally, to the mayor and the city commission, this grassroots movement is not a handful of people and represents only a small amount of the people who have been activated. And I encourage you to hold your signs up. They are not against public transit, and they are not, like someone said tonight, they do not have an enthusiastic hatred for transit. They are against this vague, open-ended $15 million proposal. They represent all political parties and no political party. They represent all age groups. They realized, we realized there was a well-connected, organized group trying to sell the task force proposals to the residents instead of letting them decide. I've had residents knocking on my door, asking for vote no signs. I have received letters from residents upset with your actions and your vision for our community. People have opened their wallets and put boots on the ground to defeat these proposals. These two issues have become another catalyst for residents who formerly felt their voices were not being heard. I suggest you reach out from your limiting circle and handpicked stack of representatives on various boards and task forces, and get a better view of what all residents want. Your vision for the community is not the only vision. And I'm encouraging people to vote no on these two, these two proposals.
Yeah, I do appreciate, and I think the rest of the commission up here appreciates your well-articulated civil public comment, so thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
1915 Roland, I've been a Royal Oak resident for almost 25 years. I've worked with the Roses program that helps the seniors out for over 20 years. Never once have I had a senior tell me life sure would be easier if there were more buses to serve them. I've seen my taxes almost double over the years from countless, it's only $10 a month, the DIA, library, zoo, public safety, road millage, drain tax, firehouse remodeling, and the recent SMART bus tax increase, et cetera, et cetera. Now, using phony data from a survey, which less than 4% of the voters took, I'm being told you want to help me stay connected with an outdated and underused system. The SMART buses are almost always empty. The Transit Task Force is being headed by an obsessed individual who has been pushing mass transit for over 20 years, and now has the help of a career politician. The cost of this transit millage changes from presentation to presentation. The May 18th, 2018 PowerPoint presentation at the library, which I have right here, is different from the presentation given at the church the week of October 7th. I live on a fixed income and like to stay connected to some of my hard-earned money. Please stop trying to help me by telling me what you think is best for me. I can't afford much more of your help.
I appreciate that public comment as well. All right, who's next? Yes, sir, in the back.
Evening, my name is Ada Bernard, 2014 Glenwood, and that is a tough act to follow. First, an observation, I was shocked to hear there are no options besides cars in Royal Oak. I would have thought someone planning a transit system would know about the brand-new bike lanes and newly-built sidewalks designed to provide some alternative to cars in our fair city. Now, last time I spoke here, I referenced the plan that still has holes big enough to drive a bus through. It hasn't changed. There's no safety measures for school kids, no ridership forecast, and a millage over twice as high as what Ann Arbor asked for their bus plan, which serves seniors, the physically disabled, and about 10,000 students on nights and weekends, and for an area over twice the size of Royal Oak. And what about the partners initially touted, like Beaumont, who are supposed to fund 15 to 20% of this plan? Where's their money? But the explanatory letter that went out had zero references to Royal Oak Connect. Zero goals, zero guarantees, zero priorities, not even a web link, despite a fair amount of detail on the sidewalk plan. As noted, the mayor said everything's on the table. As noted, the mayor said everything's on the table. If we taxpayers had issues about the plan beforehand, we can now add to that concerns about the ability of this leadership team to responsibly spend the blank check they're asking for. As already noted, many of us are not against public transit. It works in Ann Arbor. And shockingly, without buses, it works in Arlington, Texas. We just don't want poorly planned transit. Thank you.
Who's next? I can't see with the sign. Yes, ma'am. There we go. Now, I promise we're not going to dock you for all the seconds you talked before, so you get your full three minutes.
Boy, you started out by educating Suzanne Chambers Hudson. I've been here 54 years.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
You're welcome. Many of you know me. You were instructing us about being civil and respectful and decent, but you didn't make any mention to the man that came up and spoke to the terribly insulting thing that he said. What was it? Enthusiastic. So, what I'm saying to you is that I've seen many mayors come and go, and this is not the way that these meetings have been held in the past, like I say, 54 years. So, as far as the money being taken out of the, but $14 million surplus, I understand. Well, I would like to see that go to our wonderful, and thank you, sir, for being an officer. I love you wonderful officers in America, and our wonderful firefighters. If there's a surplus, that's where I'd like to see it go, to these wonderful people that are overworked and not compensated for it. It sickens me. It sickens me. So, if there's a surplus, instead of buying buses that are empty, we all know that they're empty. We all know these buses, and we can't deny it. We see them everywhere, and they're empty. And I did ask Ms. Donigan for numbers as to ridership. She couldn't tell me any numbers. I said, "Why not?" "Well, how would we know?" I said, "Your driver wouldn't know? There have to be numbers all these years we've had Smart here." So, to me, it's ridiculous, even, it's insulting. Speaking of insulting, to ask the taxpayers in this city for many, many things that we appreciate, such as parks and many of the good things that we have here, but to ask for buses is so insulting. If anybody doesn't want to drive their car was one of the things that was cited as a reason for we, the taxpayers, to buy buses that ride around empty, because there may be people that aren't interested in driving their car to work. That is not my problem. If you have a passion, that is up to you to pay for that passion. I have passions that I pay for in order to have. So, I just absolutely am very, very disappointed in the way that this meeting went tonight. And I see that the administrating department for transportation said that the ridership has dropped 20% since '08, even though the population has grown. And that is from the Transportation Administration. So, again, I asked Ms. Donigan, I said, "If you can just give me some numbers, maybe I'd consider it." But she couldn't do it. And as to the sidewalks, I had great sidewalks in front of my house, but then we had, the decision was made to come by and correct them. I have a sidewalk that I asked the engineer to come out about, because as soon as it dried, it began gathering water. And I'm very concerned about someone falling, slipping on the ice. I can't be out there sweeping the water off. And he came out and he said to me, "Well, they all gather water. Someone is going to be desperately hurt on the sidewalk in front of my house." As I say, I was proactive, asked them to come out. Nothing was done for me. So, I would like to know that I am not going to be the one that is responsible for an injury on that sidewalk that was put in against my desires. I said, "I don't think it needs it."
Ms. Chambers, I do need you to finish your final comment.
Who's responsible for that? I think we all deserve to know that. If there's a poorly...
Not you.
Not me? Well, I hope no one. I hope no one falls. I'd like them to come...
Ms. Chambers, I do need you to finish your final comment.
All right, I'd like to have someone from engineering to come back out and look at my sidewalk.
Okay. We got your address at the beginning.
Yes, you surely do. Thank you very much.
I'm also disappointed how this meeting went tonight.
What do we agree on? I didn't hear what you said.
And how this meeting went tonight, so thank you.
Place in these meetings to ask us questions and comment on us. We pay for this entire business here. The building, the, every bit of this operation is paid for by us, and I resent your comments, and I resent this three-minute thing. Five minutes was bad enough, but for you to feel that we needed to bring it down to three minutes, it wasn't working, for 54 years, it's worked for five minutes. So, there are some of us that have been around a little bit longer, and we do know some of the failures here. This is what's insulting, three minutes.
And ma'am, it is my job to keep order in the meeting.
Uh-huh. Oh, yes. And we're so disorderly out here, right?
A little bit.
Yeah. We're so disorderly. You know, this is called being...
Ma'am, now you're out of order again.
This is being proactive. Yeah, you, yes, you go ahead.
I'm intimidated in the least, not in the least, though.
All right, well, there you go. There's a new one. All right, who's next? Ma'am, you're out of order. Ma'am? You're out of order. All right, who's next? Mr. Wolf, you're out of order again. Who's next?
Everybody's out of order.
Anyone else want to be out of order? You want to get all out? All right. Ms. Wagman, you're out of order. All right, Mr. Reddy.
Hi, I'm Arvind Reddy. I live at 618 South Pleasant. And I'm sorry, I didn't prepare anything, but I just heard a few things tonight, and I think they're mistaken, so I just want to elaborate. So, one was, I don't think this proposal is requiring elderly people to walk half a mile in the snow, because the existing curb-to-curb service is going to continue, and in fact, the funding is going to be doubled. So, if they don't want to walk in the snow, they could use the existing curb-to-curb will continue. The second one was related to the compensation for the manager in the system, and so, I wasn't a member of the task force, I was just sitting out here when they came to present. And they said that they put it in the budget because they wanted to make sure that any eventuality was covered, that if we did need a manager, that the money was there, because it would be irresponsible to not have it there and then need it after the millage passed. So, there's no guarantee, and the idea that it's half a million dollars, I'm assuming that's the $100,000 over the five years of the millage, but that's not set in stone. It could be less than that. And then, the last point was that no one rides the bus. So, I ride the bus, and like, I've taken it several times over the last month, and I've been keeping track, because I've heard people say that no one rides. And I haven't gotten on with fewer than 10 people on the bus, any of the times I've gotten on, and several times it's been full by the time we get to where I'm going. I take the fast bus down to Detroit.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Reddy has the floor. He kept quiet while each and every single one of you had your time up here. You could at least extend the same courtesy to Mr. Reddy. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So, all I was saying is, I think people have the idea that no one rides the bus because they don't ride and they don't see the people on, but there are people who ride the bus. And I think, you know, people should try it. Like, I, you know, I've been riding the bus, and it's great to have an option. And for me, I live close to Woodward. I'm, you know, a couple blocks away, so I have the 450, I have the 460, I have the fast buses, which is great. And the reason I'm supporting this proposal is, I know how great it is. You don't have to park, you don't have to drive, you can have a couple beers, you don't have to worry about it. And I think if people did it, they would realize how great it is, and I want, you know, I'm supporting it because this way, the people who aren't close to the existing bus lines can have these new bus lines, be able to run them downtown and have a great time. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Yes, sir.
I'd like to take the time to express my concern about two proposed millages. Why would the city propose a sidewalk replacement fund millage for $1.8 million? The millage would collect twice the amount that was paid out in the previous work performed. As a resident and a taxpayer, I'd like to ask what criteria was used to establish the size of the millage? Why is it so hard for this group and city management to do the right thing? You are placing yourselves in a situation that is requiring residents to doubt your credibility and motivation to look out after the city's residents. A millage for a bus system with no plan, give us the funds and we'll build it, is not a viable use of $15 million. All of you who have been making so many promises to get the funding, I really believe you have no idea what you were hoping to accomplish. We have a service in place to help seniors in our community that has been neglected and underfunded by the city. Yet, you continue to sell this millage as a cure-all for schoolchildren and seniors. If it was a school bus plan, I wouldn't be up here wasting my time talking to you. We are all back to a credibility issue. What is really the motivation here? It is not the residents of Royal Oak. We all believe that this group's effort is to get to the funding. The misspending of this safety millage should let the residents of Royal Oak know your true intentions. As a resident with two brothers that are first responders, I would apologize to the Royal Oak firefighters for their mistreatment by this administration. I'm sure the funds used from the safety millage to create 42 non-emergency positions in City Hall were as not part of what was sold to the residents of Royal Oak when the safety millage was voted on and renewed. Again, credibility. I would urge the residents of Royal Oak to vote no on both millages. Do not give this administration another dime to misspend. Millages are taxes. They have exceeded their limit. They have put the city in a $227 million hole and have been selling us on the huge tax base that is coming to Royal Oak. We can live on the $14 million surplus until then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. All right, anybody else here to speak tonight, a public comment?
I'd just like to raise that in the letter from staff that did make the request for the sidewalk millage, there is the full logic thought out as far as why this amount, and we actually did have a robust discussion about why that amount was asked for, and it was pretty well explained in the letter by city staff to encourage anyone that's curious about why that's the amount to check out that letter as prepared by staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
I'd just like to add to what Commissioner Dubach said, is that part of the discussion was that the entire amount of the millage would probably not need to be levied in the first few years. I think Mr. Johnson said probably .5 mils for the first year to cover, because as was stated, 1.8 million that would be raised by the .75 mils is more than we need for the sidewalk program at this point. But since it's a five-year program, we might need more at the end.
Six-year.
Six-year program, thank you.
All right, who's next?
Hello, city commission and mayor. I've been here a few times. On behalf of Mount Vernon Boulevard, Janine Butcherelli Krolakowski, 618 Mount Vernon Boulevard. I almost feel a little bit bad talking about our road, because there's obviously bigger fish to fry here. But I feel compelled to ask that what you did a few months ago, you listened to the people on Mount Vernon. We had a majority that didn't want it paved, along with Custer and Washington. You listened to us. You listened to us regardless of what the staff told you. We had a very poignant conversation, I had several, with staff, and the numbers, engineering-wise, we proved were not adding up. And so, you guys did your job. You listened to us. The majority didn't want it paved. Now, we're facing another thing tonight. You're going to be asked, "How are we going to maintain this dirt road?" Okay? Do we just forget about it? Because that's what the staff is telling you. I read several pages about three, four weeks ago, sent out by Mr. Callahan, our engineer, okay? And these were not supportive of keeping our road the way it is. Beautiful trees over it, gorgeous walkers, bikers, seniors. At the end of our street, we have the senior citizen. We have, I talk to them all the time when I'm home doing work. Please, please, I'm asking you. We need more grading, but even besides more grading, we need to add, when we grade, some limestone, some gravel, like we do up north, okay? So, we can build this up back to where it will shed water off. We need to maintain it. We can't go with the city recommendations, the staff, and say, "Well, commission, you voted for the people and said 80% didn't want it done, and so, we're recommending nothing be done." We're asking you, you're our conduit to the staff here at the city. You're our conduit. You're who we have as our voice. Please take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, right here, I see a hand in the middle in the back. I can barely see a face, but I can see a hand. Dr. Anderson? All right. There's a good ray of light that comes right down there, and as everyone gets up, I can see.
Good evening, commissioners and Mayor Fournier. Am I coming through on the, okay. Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard, and I'm going to follow up a little on what Janine said in just a moment, but I do want to say that I really am opposed to both the millages. But I'm really here to speak on Agenda Item Number 14, that non-paving alternatives for Mount Vernon Boulevard. I want to thank Greg Rassell, the Director of the Departments of Public Works and Recreation, for meeting with me last week to discuss the road. If we could have a hard surface and not lose all or most of our trees, many of us would be very pleased, but that's clearly not possible, and we do understand the challenges that weather poses for dirt and gravel roads. The work outlined in the letter for Agenda Item Number 14, specifically grading five times and blading three or four times a year, probably would keep the road tolerable, particularly if it could be combined with, as Janine mentioned, purchasing limestone gravel using road millage funds to fill in the most problematic areas. We do pay for our own dust control two, three times a year after some grading is done. Washington and the Custer intersection are a real mess right now, but that's primarily due to all the heavy equipment that was used during the two-to-three-week period when the sidewalks were being put in. Now that the rains have stopped, we're confident the city will get in and remedy those potholes. Craig Hutler, 208 Mount Vernon, has graciously agreed to be our designated liaison to the city to request grading or blading, and he made a request last week once the road began to dry up. I want to thank you, commissioners and Mayor Fournier, for your support as we have negotiated this complex situation that's so important to the neighborhoods and beyonds.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay, who's next tonight? Anybody else? I don't see any hands going, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Kathy Klein, 401 Park Gav, Royal Oak. I'm here with this again. Sorry, I know you guys got a full plate, but I wanted to, in marketing and sales, they teach us that it takes 20 no's to get a yes. So, I'm going to come and make sure I'm here plenty before this goes down, because we've had some strange goings-on with regard to neighborhoods in my vicinity. And the Twain residents asked if we would increase notification distances. I understand the law says 300 feet, and all we have to do is 300 feet. But I'm going to leave this with you guys, and I'll also email it to you. This is my neighborhood adjacent to a development one block south, and it's a good case in point why 300 feet is not enough. It happens to just cut this side of the street out of any discussion about what's going on here, and that has an ability to directly impact the neighborhoods, kind of like in a domino effect. So, I think this is a good case in point where 500 feet would probably be very reasonable and wouldn't keep you, you could still make whatever decision you want in the end, but to include a little greater distance where it's, sorry about that, where it's going to affect future neighborhoods or neighborhoods adjacent to it, 500 feet for maybe where, 300's great for residential next to residential. You're going to hit all the neighbors around that residential development. 500 feet for multi around single-family might be reasonable. Oh, I keep doing that, sorry. And then, maybe 1,000 feet, like we learned Auburn Hills does, when they have maybe commercial abutting... a budding residential or multi, because you've got families directly impacted by that. So I'm going to come, and I'm going to try to get my 20 in before the master planning process actually happens, so that we can with reason consider what I think are a reasonable request to expand notification. And again, postcards don't cut it. They get tossed. It's got to be on city letterhead that looks very official. None of us throw away anything that comes to our homes on official city letterhead unless it was maybe the information on the transit. But I also want to say, sorry, that was a little bit strange-looking. It's really important. I spend a lot of time teaching sustainability, recycling throughout Southeast Michigan. I'm in Detroit. I'm in Oakland County on all kinds of planning committees, and I believe truly that the next generation is all about collaboration. So if we don't find a way to better collaborate to get these issues resolved, we're teaching them the wrong things. And we had two young ones in the back today watching this play out. And even in that instance, I tried to tell him, "Well, it's not about how we're going to vote, but it's about when you do your homework, do you do it well? Do you do it thorough? Do you get it done to where it needs to be in order to turn that assignment in?" And one of the brothers said, "I just turned it in." And the other brother said, "No, no, you got to wait till you get it done right, and then you turn it in." That's all a no vote on this might be, is another opportunity for the grownups in the room to come to the table and study this thing a little more thoroughly so that we're presenting our best face on these really controversial issues. I've been in the community since '91. I invested in a business from 2000 to 2009 that folded because restaurant bar kind of flipped retail.
Miss Klein, I do need you to finish your last thought.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I wasn't paying attention. So I am going to ask again that we just exercise civility, as you said, truly is important. I get to spend a lot of time at meetings in other communities and listen to this many, many times throughout the month, but do consider... Can I approach?
Yeah, Ms. Klein, please. And I encourage you too, if you have a digital copy, to also send a copy to the planning commission.
I'll email... And I did email you guys this past week. I can pass those around, but they're not marked up with where my home is in relation to that.
It's a good point. You make good points.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Who's next? Going once? Yes, sir. Is that... It is Mr. Woodward. Come on up.
Here's Mayor, members of the commission.
Dave Woodward, 2915 Woodland Avenue. I actually wasn't planning to speak tonight during public... And I've been in a lot of political discourse, and I share a lot of disappointment that I think some have raised today about the sad dialogue that's happening here. And I feel compelled to speak up and add my voice to the mix because I think that there are some things that are important that need to be addressed. First, I believe in improving public transportation. I've heard a lot of conversations about people poking holes at this plan and everything, saying that they support public transportation, but not this plan. And you know what? I'll respect that. But I also have heard those comments made by people who actually do oppose supporting public transportation, who believe that it shouldn't exist at all, that people who didn't support it, I mean, haven't supported in the past, and that's okay, too. I firmly do believe that improving public transportation is absolutely critical to investing into our communities, just as it is important to invest in our libraries and invest in our public safety and invest in our roads and invest in our, I mean, broad transportation infrastructure. Now, I take, I mean, some issue, I mean, a lot of misinformation being spread about a plan that has no detail. The plan proposed that led to the proposal being put on the ballot was developed by transit professionals. It was vetted by financial experts. It tried to address four core objectives. Those objectives is how can we measurably improve transportation for an aging population? How can we make sure that it's a transportation system that connects to the overall area? How can we provide a need that I've been hearing for 10 years about improving transportation for school-aged children that because our yellow bus system doesn't exist and cover the entire area? How do we do that in a way that incorporates best practices when it comes to public transportation, which is span and coverage, increasing frequency, and all those types of things, which is outlined on the city's website in the transit report? It lays out those things in great detail. And the reality to do those things, to provide that people say there's no hours of service. I mean, the budget is clearly designed around 16, 18 hours of service during the week and 14 to 16 hours on the weekend. Now, I can accept that people don't support public transit, and maybe they don't support this individual plan, but it is absolutely imperative we do this. It's important to our region. It's important to our aging population. It's important to our future. It's important to attracting the talent, and that's why Beaumont Hospital, virtually every CEO in the area, is working tirelessly to improve public transportation. Now, I see my time is up, and I want to say thank you for this time, and we have an opportunity to address it. And if not, at minimum, we've had more conversation about public transit in this town than I can remember. So thank you for your time. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak tonight at public comment? Going once? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Linda Tumala. Whoops. Is that better?
Yep.
My name is Linda Tumala. I live at 3012 Helen Court, Royal Oak, Michigan. I've been a resident here for approximately 58 years. So even not born here, I guess that kind of makes me almost a full-timer or native of this city. I've seen us go from a community that was very vibrant when I first came here as a single person to a teaching job with Montgomery Wards downtown, R&B shop, for those that can remember that far back, and many other businesses, to where, after getting married and settling here with my husband, seen times we used to joke about it, that you could throw a bowling ball down Main Street and not hit anybody, to the changes we have seen in that now 10 years, 15 years ago, I could go downtown. We'd go downtown and have an ice cream cone, walk around, enjoy the vibrance of downtown. I've seen that as a community, being a community. What I'm seeing now, I do not feel that way. The changes in downtown, the changes in things, not the commission not seeming to listen to people. The two items on the ballot, the sidewalk and the transit, I will be voting no. I don't believe either one of them are appropriate at this time. The sidewalks have just had a six-year cycle, and I would think sidewalks should last longer than having to redo them again. And I know the thing is, you're saying we need this money for the future. But I think sidewalks should be able to handle it for a little longer and not have another millage on people. The... Yes, I'm watching it. I am one of those people that say, yes, I do believe in transit, but I don't believe in this plan. It's not a plan that is current or modern. It does not really address the needs for the amount of money. And the $250,000 for seniors, that could easily come out of the budget that you folks could work for if you so intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tumala. All right. Anybody else here to speak at public comment?
I would like to...
Anybody else here to speak at public comment?
I would like to address when I...
Mr. Wolf, once again, you're out of order, sir. Going once?
What's going on with Birmingham?
Going twice. Do I see a hand back there? All right. Mr. Wolf.
I want to know why Birmingham doesn't...
Mr. Wolf, I want to know why you can't respect the rules of our city commission.
Because you make up the suit yourself.
Mr. Wolf, you're out of order. Mr. Wolf. All right. We're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back up to here. This brings us to item number eight, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Lavasser.
I would move approval of the agenda with one exception. I would like to move item number 19 up to immediately following the consent agenda.
We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion... Mr. Wolf, we're having a meeting up here, doing important city business. Once again, you're out of order. All right. This brings us to item number nine, the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay. Commissioner Perusch.
With this large microphone in front of me tonight, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Perusch. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Any other discussion? The consent agenda tonight consists of the city commission meeting minutes from September 24th and October 8th, claims from October 12th and October 23rd, approval of purchase order, approval of 2019 theft prevention authority grant sub-recipient agreement, approval of the Royal Oak Youth Assistance Board of Directors, award of the contract cap 1908 14-mile road Water Main project, contract modification to contract CAP 1910 professional engineering services, receive and file non-action items, and the September 2018 Franco Project Activity Report. Any other discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to former item number 19, which is a discussion of backlog for construction-site plan reviews, and I think almost all of us probably had something to do with requesting this. So since Commissioner Lavasser asked for it to be moved up, I'll let you open up.
Well, I see that Mr. Craig is here, and if he could simply give us a report, I'm sure I'll have questions for him on that. But, you know, for those who are watching who may not be familiar with this, we received a concern from a resident in town who needs his home made accessible for his wheelchair. But he indicated that there was a delay in getting the approval, and so that's why we put it on the agenda, so we can see what's going on there and see what we can do to address that issue.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Well, Mr. Craig? The question's been asked, and you're the man with the answer.
I'm sorry. I haven't prepared any report. I don't know what the question is.
Mr. Lavasser, can you ask Mr. Craig the question again?
Certainly. Mr. Craig, you've heard the concern about delays in getting approval for plans within the community, and can you tell us where we stand as far as what the turnover time is once you get a request for approval of plans before it actually gets looked at and either received approval or conditional approval or whatever the case might be?
Generally, we're about two to four weeks before we have comments back.
Mr. Craig, there's been some discussion on like our policy has always been in the past, first come, first served. Can you give us a little bit of history on that policy and maybe elaborate to the rest of the commission where we're not so familiar with it?
I never thought of it as a policy. It's just, I don't know, first come, first serve. It's the way we've always done it. I don't know that it's a formal policy, or I don't have a history on it, other than that's the way they did it before I got there, and that's the way we've done it since I've been there.
Okay. Are there... What is lumped in... Let me ask first, how many people do you have reviewing plans, and what is the level of expertise needed for that?
For a commercial plan, there are four people who look at it. Commercial is everything that's not in the one- and two-family building code. That's looked at by a building inspector, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical. Residential, which is everything that's one- and two-family, is just looked at by a building inspector.
Okay. So if you have a single unit in a multi-unit building, who looks at that?
That would be a commercial building code.
Okay. Is that the same turnaround time, two to four weeks?
Yes.
And single-family residential, two-family residential, that's two to four weeks?
Yes.
How much time is needed by staff for any particular request for review of plan?
It depends. They vary greatly.
Okay.
I mean, I got City Hall plans, and then I have plans to redo an existing commercial space. They will take different amounts of time. They're different scopes of work.
So the City Hall plan and I presume the Henry Ford building, those are part of the things that you were looking at?
I have all of those things in right now.
How much time is that taking?
We don't clock each one. You mean about how much time is somebody actually sitting in front of it and looking? Or do you mean, again, the turnaround time?
Yeah. I'm trying to get a sense of how much that's taking up your day or your staff's day, those projects, the City Hall, the police station, the new building that Henry Ford will occupy.
We don't parse them out like that. We're in the office for an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon, and they try to look at plan reviews while they're doing that. We've been working overtime in the mornings to do plan reviews, so that generally happens in the mornings. But how much time you spend looking at any one particular plan varies.
Is there... And you mentioned overtime. That was one of my... Going to be one of my questions. Do we have the opportunity for additional overtime? Do we have the staff to provide additional overtime if we authorize it?
I have authorization to do it. They're doing as much as they can right now.
Okay. Are there other things that we can do such as streamlining the process for certain reviews that may be a little bit simpler? Or bringing in third-party experts to help with the backlog? Any suggestions that we can do there?
Well, I don't have any suggestions for that, no, although I don't consider two to four weeks of backlog. That's a normal operating time for any building department. I mean, for an example, if you wanted a check cut, it's going to take two weeks. That's a normal process.
Okay. My understanding is that the commission recently approved adding additional staff to your department.
Yes.
But that position has not been filled, or those positions have not yet been filled?
We have not yet been able to fill that position.
The... What we have going on right now, would you say the workload is consistent with what it has been in past years, or is it bumped up from what it's been in past years?
Right now, we're a little bit busier than we have been. I have more big projects right now than we have in the last 10 years.
Okay. What prompted us to put this on the agenda was concern about a particular situation. I mean, it's one thing if you have people who are anxious to move a program forward and they're disappointed that they have to wait. My preference would be that we can provide as good quality service as we possibly could and move everything forward quickly. But what really prompted this was concerns where people need this service in order to make their homes livable for themselves in a very unique situation, and what we might be able to do to assist people who have unique needs like that.
That sounded like a statement.
Are we just looking for a policy decision on whether we simply go with something other than a first-in, first-out basis on some situations?
I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Well, let me ask it a different way. You're familiar with the gentleman who's here today who expressed concern over his property, Washington and Fifth Street, I believe it is, who needs to make his home accessible for his wheelchair. You have a feel for how much time it would take from staff once they pick up that file to review it and to move it forward?
I don't.
Do you have a sense for what the typical review time would be for a file like that?
Probably a morning or two after we get to it.
I'm trying to get a feel for hours, whether we're talking about, is it a one-hour review to look at the file? Is it a six-hour review? That's what I'm trying to get at.
With everybody, it's probably a three-hour review.
Yeah. I'm trying to make sure I understand what you mean by everybody.
I have four trades that will look at it.
Okay. So three hours, each of them maybe 45 minutes, something like that?
Yeah. I don't have my calculator, so I don't know.
I'm wondering if there's something that we can do to change the policy from first-in, first-out to perhaps expedite certain requests when they involve something as significant as making an individual's home accessible for their wheelchair, something along those lines. There may be other things that you can think of, but that's what I'm looking for from you, is some recommendation, what we can do to assist people who have more of an emergency than others people do.
Unfortunately, I don't have a recommendation for you.
Commissioner Dubois.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think what Commissioner Lavasser is getting at is, have you ever heard of any sort of expedited process or emergency, like putting someone to the top of the pile as a policy that some other city has had, or some other department has had, where there's some sort of express lane based on unique circumstances or necessity of getting something done quickly?
I'm not aware of any. They may exist, but I'm not aware of any.
So, how feasible would it be to incorporate into our process if we were to ask for a policy saying, if someone's basic health, safety, or access to their home is at stake, that we give them, you know, they fill out all the things, saying what's at stake, what the circumstances are, you look at it and say, okay, yeah, we'll put you at the top of the pile because of these unique circumstances. Is that feasible?
If you tell me to review plans in a certain order based on somebody's criteria, then that's what I will do.
So, that's doable. We could come up with a process.
Anything's doable.
Sure. Well, but I want to understand, like, I don't, you know, I don't want to be shooting from the hip. I want to make sure that we're not causing unintended consequences, but I can think of a good number of reasons why some particularly residential requests would need to be expedited. You know, especially something that can be done in a couple hours versus, you know, our major projects that take like, weeks and weeks and weeks of review, and you're not even doing those all at the same time, right? You have to come back and revisit them and continue working with those builders.
Correct.
So, those builders, they're invested, you know, millions of dollars into what they're doing, and they're going to do it right, because they know we're watching. But residents, say residents who aren't even in really extreme circumstances, we create a disincentive for them to do it the right way when it's cumbersome and takes weeks or months, right? And contractors move on to other jobs, they've got an unfinished job at their house because, just because of the timing. So, I'm just curious. So, there is, it is feasible to create a process by which we expedite some things based on specific criteria that we'd lay out for you?
If you lay out specific criteria, I'll do my best to follow those. I don't know the legality of doing such a thing, but I...
Well, I'm curious...
I will do whatever you, whatever you lay out as a criteria for how you want me to do it. I'm happy to apply it.
I mean, because I think like, in this case, the common sense test would be that this gentleman needs to be able to access his home. That's a pretty, I think that's a pretty special circumstance that I think we could definitely carve out a policy around. The question is, if we want to have a larger conversation about common resident needs that maybe shouldn't have to take three or four weeks. But that's, so there's two different conversations. The next question is, is that for us to go and research and bring you suggestions? Or is that the kind of thing you could talk to, you know, your sister departments in other cities, see if anyone has anything like that, and bring that to us?
I can ask other departments and see if they have something similar, but I would at the same time ask you to bring what you want forward.
Sure, I think that's fair.
Because I would, I think I would struggle to come up with the criteria and...
Yeah, and I think we'd probably have to fine-tune what that would look like, because you don't want to be so vague, so that folks are just jumping the line just because they don't want to have to wait. But I think there's circumstances where there's a very specific need that it, I don't think is asking too much for us to meet.
Whatever you want.
All right.
Commissioner Perush.
I just have some general questions, just about your general operations, back to the numbers that we were talking about earlier. You said you have four people in your department who review the plans, four different specialties, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and building. And you say that they're generally out in the field doing inspections, but they're in the office generally an hour in the morning, and then an hour late in the afternoon after they come back from the field, so to speak.
Yes.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, we handed out some awards to some members of the fire department, and the fire marshal was recognized for his work doing a whole lot of things. And I believe, it was my understanding, that he also reviews certain plans. Is that the case?
He reviews some plans that are, the fire plans. That he cannot look at the building plans. He's not credited to look at the building plans.
Right, absolutely. But for those plans that need his review, that's another step in the process that has to be gone through.
Correct.
In other words, if there's going to be a fire suppression system in the building, he's going to look at the plan for it.
Correct.
Okay, and I would assume that that would be not only commercial, but also multifamily residential that has sprinkler systems?
Yes.
That kind of thing?
Those are usually done as a deferred submittal after we start our... After we release our permits, they usually do that as a deferred submittal.
Okay, so it's not necessarily something that has to be done before they, you issue a building permit?
Right.
That's the bottom line. Okay. Back to the numbers in terms of things that you're dealing with right now. We mentioned at least one big project out here in front of us, but how many... Just to ballpark, how many residential building permits are you looking at on a yearly basis these days?
We're doing about 150 new houses a year. I don't know how many other residential plans we look at. It's, I'm going to say I probably have 50 in for review right now.
Okay.
And that's, you know, that number goes down a little bit, it goes up a little bit, but...
And that includes not only new houses, but also additions? I mean, we redid our bathrooms a couple of years ago. We had to get permits, and that had to go through your department. So, it's, the volume is more concentrated, I would think, in those, the smaller, so to speak, residential projects as opposed to City Hall or...
I have, I have two bins in my office. One is the one and two-family. The other is commercial, which is basically everything else, and they're both pretty full.
Okay. Were you guys involved in reviewing the plans for the Beaumont project up at 13 Mile and Woodward?
Yes.
You had all of those, and you're, I would assume that those plans have all been approved, but you're still doing inspections out there?
Well, what we approved were core and shell buildings. They hadn't provided any tenant build-outs for anything, so they were what we call a white box. Those are, those were all approved, and we are doing the inspections out there. But now we are starting to see the tenant builds, build-outs coming in for those.
So, that'll come back through you again? For all, for all of the tenant spaces that are going to be out there?
Yep.
Okay. What about the building project at Norma Di Oakes? All of those new houses, all of those plans came through you?
Correct, still are.
And the big apartments that are at Mark Twain Park, that's, that's all going through you?
Yes.
A couple hundred units?
Yeah, Midtown Point, yes.
Okay. What about like, the Hyatt Hotel and the other building projects on Main Street? That's, is that in your box now?
Yeah, well, the Hyatt has got their temporary C of O. That was, and as projects like that start getting closer to completion, we're out there every single day for multiple inspections, you know? So, it's, it wouldn't be unusual if I said we spent six to eight hours at the Hyatt when it was finishing up, every day.
What about demolition permits? Do they go through your department?
Yes.
How many of those do you usually have in a year, just a general ballpark?
I haven't run any numbers, but probably a couple hundred.
Okay. Any types of industrial buildings that you're dealing with right now? We don't have a whole lot of industrial in Royal Oak.
Nothing that rings a bell, but any new developments, we're going to see them.
Okay, does that involve more types of inspections than just a general commercial building? Probably depends on the type of industry.
It depends on the use, and depends on how they're building it out. If it's just a big open warehouse, those are a little easier, but the more offices and the more systems you get in there, like labs and stuff like that, it gets a little more complicated.
In terms of the people who are going out into the field, say a contractor gets all of the electrical work installed in, let's say, a house, and calls for an inspection, what is the time gap generally, at least right now, between when that call comes in and says, you know, we're ready to inspect, and an inspector can actually get there?
If we get a call by 3 o'clock, which it's not really a call anymore, because they do everything through our online system.
Right.
They can go in and they can request an inspection. We're out the next business day.
Okay, so those you're handling on a regular, within a 24-hour period?
Right.
And about how many of those do you get in a day?
Each inspector's handling anywhere from 15 to 25 inspections a day.
Okay, and for each of the four inspectors?
I have five inspectors, two building, one electrical, one mechanical, one plumbing. And they're each handling 17 to 25 a day.
Okay, and in terms of the vacancy that you have now, is that... A couple of years ago, you were having trouble filling vacancies, trouble finding people who were qualified. Are you still having that difficulty, or...
Yes.
Okay, is that, is that the reason why someone hasn't been hired? You just haven't been getting anybody qualified?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all the questions I have right now.
Commissioner Macy?
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Perush. You've got several of mine in there. One I have, so, I mean, we talked about the time difference, but I wonder if you could state generally how much longer a commercial than a residential takes in terms of the site panel, the review?
I don't know the difference in time, but they're really on two different paths. One is looked at by one inspector, and one is looked at by a group of four. They, they don't cross over.
Okay, so the one that's for the residential, is that the extra building inspector? So, you said there's two building, one...
I have, I have two building, one electrical, one mechanical, one plumbing.
Okay, so I got that four of those were needed for the commercial, and then there's only one for the residential. Is it the building one, or is it...
Yeah, it's building.
Okay, all right. So, I guess one thing that was interesting is that the two to four weeks, I know you said that that's pretty common for other building departments in the area. I mean, I know a few builders personally as friends who have stated that it actually seems to take, Royal Oak is in fact at more of a backlog than some of the neighboring cities. And I just wonder, what's the rationale for having the review be, you know, at this longer stage, and then, but then getting out to inspect right away? Because it seems like that's a, that's a value choice we're making on the inspection being like, an important right-away necessity versus the site plan review?
It is. That's, that's the way it's been since I've started here. A lot of people would argue that once they're under construction, they're, they have a process that they have to keep up to, to keep moving along with the project. We do the, again, we do the plan reviews as they come in. Some of them can be on the two-week side, some of them can be on the four-week side. It just depends what I have in front of it. Somebody could call me today and say, how long's my plan review going to take? I don't know. When it's here, I got a better idea, but I still can't give you an exact answer. Because I don't know when Beaumont's going to come in tomorrow and drop a plan that thick on my desk. I don't know, you know, I don't know when some of our bigger projects are going to show up.
But you do know, when a plan that's already been reviewed, you know where it is in the hopper, right? Because...
I know, I know where it is in the system, yeah. I, and again, when that's going to be done varies depending on several things.
Okay.
People get sick, we get lots of inspections called in that we got to handle, or we might get none, and then I'll keep somebody in all day, and they'll, they'll do plan review.
Well, that's sort of what I'm wondering, if we were to move to a 48-hour inspection cycle instead of a 24-hour inspection cycle, and thus have all of our people available maybe one extra day per week, everybody stays in one day per week to do site plan review?
It wouldn't change it. It would just push those 17 to 25 back a day. They don't go away.
And you still have the same amount of inspections you have to do.
They don't go away on us, just because we make them wait a day.
I'm not saying they go away, but I'm just saying, instead of getting to them the next day, that's what gets pushed out. There's, we're making a choice here, whether what we're going to do one day versus another. I'm not saying, I understand totally it wouldn't, it wouldn't go away, but it would push them out. And I know from having, doing my own renovation, that one inspection follows another. So, if you have to wait two days for mechanical or plumbing, then you have to wait two days for the next. And I'm not saying it's great. I think it's fantastic that Royal Oak has a 24-hour turnaround. That's great for our builders. I'm just wondering if there is some choice to be made here between the two things that we're doing?
Whatever you don't do today and you do tomorrow, it's, you only get away with one day. You can only do that one day, and then everything else is, when you go two days, it's all stacked back up.
What he's saying is that you would gain one day that you could have everybody doing plan review, but after that, you've got a new queue for every single day. So, you don't gain it again, over and over again. You only gain it once.
Either way, I'm saying if we keep one inspector in each day, one inspector does no inspections each day, like a Monday, electrical doesn't. I get you're saying this is a bad idea. I guess I'm not seeing why. Okay, and then I have some question about the inability to hire, to fill this new position. Do you have a sense why that is? If there's no qualified people, are we not attracting them with our, the package that we're offering to them? Or is there just really nobody out there looking for this kind of work?
The conversations that I have had with potential applicants is that it's, the package is not sufficient to lure them to apply.
Okay. And if we, the new person that we're hiring, which, where would they come in? Like, what would they, is it a building, another building inspector?
I actually have authorization to hire one of each position. That's what I'm trying to do, and I can't seem to do that.
So, and you think for all of them, it's probably because the package we're offering is not sufficient?
I, that's what I've been told.
Okay. Oh, I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion points or questions? Commissioner Macy?
I just wondered if I could ask Mr. Johnson if we've taken a look at the package that we're offering for these positions, and if maybe compared them to our, some other neighboring cities, and see if we could improve what we're offering to attract these people? It seems like this could, for four people we're waiting on to hire, that's a big, it's a big difference.
We're looking for a solution that doesn't have an impact on other bargaining units. We think we might have found one.
Is it a secret?
Yes.
It isn't fully worked out yet. You'll see it eventually.
I have a question for Mr. Gillum. The question was brought up about the legality of, you know, moving beyond or giving preference to a set of needs. Is that something that is a grave concern? Is it something this commission has purview of, if we can set those priorities?
Just on its face, I have potential concerns about the idea of giving priority to certain classes of individuals for their inspections as opposed to certain types of inspections. I think the devil would be in the details. But if there were priorities that were going to be given to specific individuals, the policy would have to be so specific that there really wouldn't be any discretion involved as to who's going to jump first and who isn't going to jump first.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Macy?
Mr. Gillum, if, would accessibility be a type of category?
I mean, I think you'd have to define accessibility. I mean, accessibility for who? Accessibility for the property owner? Accessibility for a resident, if it's a multiple family? Again, there... You could almost go down a rabbit hole with all the different possibilities or all the different potential issues.
Would it be a legal situation, or a, put the city at risk of liability if we were to, one, direct staff to go back with some consultation from City Commission to, you know, look about, look at policies, including your office, to understand what those policies could be, what our limitations are? But also, is it a challenge for us tonight, in your opinion? Would it be haphazard, or would it be reckless for us if this commission gave direction on, for one particular petitioner to approve their, or move their permit ahead because of the unique circumstance for that individual? What's your opinion on that?
Well, who's making the determination as to what the unique circumstances are? Again, I think you're getting into some very subjective criteria. If you're advancing any individual's application above anybody else contrary to what the existing policy is, I think you're potentially creating legal problems for the city.
So, notwithstanding a bona fide policy that we vetted and looked at and made sure it holds up to all legal standards, we're kind of stuck in a tough position to move any individual's applicant ahead of the line because of the... Although it's not a written policy, it's the policy we've employed for arguably decades?
Yeah, again, I never thought of first come, first served as a policy, but I guess when you put it in that context, it is.
I mean, it's a de facto policy, and we're talking about deviating from that policy without any specific determination as to why it is we're going to deviate.
Because common sense, like Commissioner Dubbuck said, is we should be helping our resident out here. I don't think anybody in the community would disagree at a common sense level. But what I hear you saying is, just like in other circumstances we've seen here, you know, common sense can sometimes conflict with law, and that may cause a problem for us.
You took the words right out of my mouth. At a common sense level, I would agree, 1,000%. But I'm not here to give you advice on a common sense level. I'm giving you advice on a legal level, and I think it's potentially a problem. There are a lot of other people that are in line and have been waiting in line for a period of time, and you're going to advance someone ahead of everyone else.
Commissioner Perush?
And it, there's, there's...
And it, there's, there's no question that his circumstances are, are serious and significant, but I, I'm just envisioning to follow up with Mr. Gillum's comments, the potential that there are people who are in that line who are saying, "All of a sudden, I'm not ambulatory up to my second story, so I'm going to have to add on first floor bathroom." Or, "All of a sudden, you know, I have to mod, make modifications to my kitchen because of my physical circumstances." You know, is, does that, "And I have to wait in line." Are those, I, I can, I agree with the rabbit hole analogy, that once you start down that path of making an exception, you know, how far can you go without, without being discretionary, which the law says you shouldn't be? So, I, this is a real tough one, but I, I really think that there are some potential problems here. If we were to make, make an exception for, for one circumstance without considering the policy in a much broader perspective, that's, that's my concern.
Commissioner Macy?
So, Mr. Greenblatt has brought this forward very publicly. Would there be a problem with us going to the people who are ahead of him in the queue and saying, "There's someone who needs to jump ahead of the queue." How do you feel about that?
I'd feel more comfortable if we knew that there wasn't going to be an objection. Yes.
I mean, who, who would have the standing to be upset about this? Just the people ahead in the queue? And I understand that we're talking about the rabbit holes and opening up the doors and everyone's going to come and say they need an exception. I, I have faith in this Royal Oak community that they would see this as an important exception to be made in this case, and I don't think it was, it's going to cause people to go crazy. Maybe I'm wrong. But we're not changing the policy. So, if people were to come to public comment and make their case as eloquently as Mr. Greenblatt has, maybe we'd make an exception for them too, if we could get everyone to agree.
Mr. Gillum, what if we're wrong? Let's say, I like Commissioner Macy's idea, what if we're wrong? I mean, what's the penalty if someone comes back and says, "Oh, you moved this person ahead even though everyone said it was okay"? You know, I mean, what's the financial liability for the city? I wouldn't imagine, I mean, someone would have to prove damages, you know, that...
Arguably, you're talking about violations of equal protection under the law, in violation of the federal constitution, in violation of the state constitution. If a party could establish economic damage because their economic expectations had been met, a developer that lost tenants, something like that.
So, it's more than a slap on the wrist?
Yes. Attorney's fees.
But we get a great value for our attorney's fees.
No, I'm talking about the attorney's fees you have to pay to the other side after they win their lawsuit.
You're right. Commissioner Macy?
Thank you.
Does anyone outside the people in the queue have standing for this?
In terms of a damage claim, probably not. They would, they'd still have standing to bring a facial challenge to the new policy, if you will, for the new practice, but...
Commissioner, did I see him? Commissioner, no. Commissioner LaVassar.
I, I'm trying to get a sense for how many plans that we see might meet this criteria, where it's focused on making a property accessible for someone because of their, their need to utilize a wheelchair.
I don't know. I don't, I don't study all the plans to that level. I mean, every plan I look at has some level of accessibility to it because that's built into the code. You have to, you have to meet certain accessible, certain provisions of the code for accessibility, so...
All right, all right. I understand that, but when you're looking at plans that are very specific, that require or, or designed to provide unique accessibility because of an individual's particular circumstances? Is this one plan every four months? Is it five plans a week? What are you looking at?
I, I would say that this is uncommon. This is the first one that I've dealt with on this level and that, and that I've had somebody come and try to state a need for accessibility. I hear needs all the time. I hear why people need to have their plan looked at first. Everybody wants their plan looked at right away and everybody has a situation, which usually is a result of poor planning. That's usually somebody who didn't account for our time in their process. But, but again, I don't specifically look at all the plans and categorize them as which ones are accessible only in nature.
What I'm hearing from, from your discussion a little earlier is that, you know, right now, there may be one plan that meets the, the specific concerns that we have and that by, by bumping that up, we would be bumping everyone else down about three hours in the review process. Is that an inaccurate statement?
Yes, that's inaccurate.
Please explain it to me.
Well, if I pull that plan forward, then everybody else is going to be setback what actually might be review hours, but that could be three or five days. It could be three to five days, just depending on when I can devote those hours to plan review.
Okay. I guess I'm not seeing how three hours becomes three or five days.
I don't, I don't sit down every single day and, and look at plans for three hours. We, we don't have the time to do that. We don't have the ability to do that. So, it could be three to five days before we get back to doing plan review. If somebody's got a vacation scheduled, if somebody's sick, then, then they don't have anybody looking at plans that day.
Or if you have a whole slew of inspections that...
Or, or if I have to prepare a temporary certificate of occupancy for an important hotel in town, we, we devote, I'm telling you, all of our time to that. From, from the time my inspectors get in in the morning, they have people standing there at the counter wanting to ask them questions, wanting to know when you're coming out. They want to know how to frame their deck, how to frame their wall. And right up until the time they leave, they might not have time to do a plan review that day. So, I, I can't say every day that I have time to devote to that. That's what the, the morning and the afternoon are spent with people calling, they're trying to get their inspections together, they have to put results in, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into the, the whole job. So, plan review is just one portion of it. So, it could be three to five days that the next person will be pushed back.
If we make no changes in our policies right now, the, the individual who came to talk to us today, when might he expect to see his plan approved?
I, I would expect probably end of this week or early next week. Given that nothing else changes that I don't have control over.
What else might change that could become a problem?
One of the inspectors gets sick, doesn't come in for three days. When's the lottery Tuesday night? He won't be here? I don't know. There's, there's other, you know, like, I could have, I could have another project that's ready for inspections, that's just pushing everything else out of the way. And I don't know what that project could be right now. If I knew what tomorrow was, then I'd probably be doing a different job, but every day I wake up, it's something new coming down the line. An example is, I had no idea we were going to be talking about this on Thursday, but here I am.
Okay. So, so basically, if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, if, if a bunch of requests for inspections come in, that would leapfrog the consideration for this plan?
Well, you're trying to, you're trying to pin me down to a time and I can't, I can't give that. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. I can't tell you exactly when it'll be.
I appreciate that. I'm simply looking for a solution that's going to satisfy our city attorney and solve the problem that we have at hand here.
But asking me how long until he gets his, I don't, I don't have an answer.
Commissioner Gibbs?
And this is only his first look at his plans, correct? You've not reviewed them at any time prior, you've not reviewed them up to now?
Correct.
So, there could be another two weeks or four weeks of communication, trying to work out whatever issue is not satisfactory for the building department.
If the plans are not approvable, then we develop comments, we send those comments to the design professional, and it could be three months before we get them back from the design professional. I have no control over that.
And how often does that happen in a similar circumstance? Like a condo unit?
There is no, there is no rule. I mean, every design professional's different. Every single design professional's different. Some get them back to me the next day, some get them back to me literally three months later.
Okay.
And then, and then they have to go back into the queue to be looked at because I'm bouncing back and forth between revisions and new plans all the time.
Okay. So, like the nuts and bolts of it, if you were to approve by the end of the week his, his plans, or you were to approve and had comments to his plans for his condo, for accessibility, and you gave comments back to the developer, to the developer, the construction people, and they got them back to you within a week, it would be another two to four weeks before he would get comments back again?
Not two to four weeks before we get back to the revisions. It, it would probably be about another week. We try to look at those revisions in a week. That's, that's the other part that's weaving back into our new plans is all of the revisions that we have in that are waiting to be re-looked at that have already been looked at. So, we, we don't just take one and then the other, we, we mix them back and forth.
And I was trying to understand your priority for that, so thank you. But that still doesn't shorten the time for a concern such as this.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, I'm just not, you know, with our attorney's advice and concerns, there, I, I don't see any action other than staff working in good faith as expeditiously as possible to get this plan approved. I, I don't see any other options for us tonight. What we can do is use this as a learning experience to explore what policies we can put in place. But unless anyone's willing to take the risk against our attorney's advice, we have to stick in this case with the policy as it is, is, is my read on the situation. So, unless, you know, someone's looking to put forward a motion to disregard the policy in this case, you know, I'll put forward a motion to, you know, as we discussed, direct Mr. Craig to, you know, explore what other communities have done with regard to, you know, some sort of expedited situation in certain circumstances, and we'll do the same. And we'll bring that back and have a discussion about a policy that hopefully remedy the situation so that other folks are not in it. But that is my, that is my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion? Commissioner LaVassar?
I, I want to direct this actually to Mr. Gillum and, and ask, what if we adopted a temporary policy at this time with, with the idea that we're going to explore what that policy should be in greater depth? Does that change your perspective on the legal risks involved?
No. With all respect, no, because all you're doing is indicating you're going to jump a specific individual to the head of the line without establishing any criteria, at least not that I've heard or seen tonight, so...
Any other discussion? All right. Commissioner LaVassar?
I, I was still trying to get a sense of what, what the, the risk here is, potential risk involved here, if, if we have a very directed policy change that deals very specific, very specifically with accessibility for someone's personal residence. You know, I, I appreciate that there's risks, but, but sometimes you have to be willing to take some chances there and deal with something because it's the right thing to do. And I am looking for the solution there and what we can do.
Well, are there other people that are already have submitted plans who would meet the same criteria? That should be, if you establish this, this, this one-time exception, are there other people that really should be at the head of the line that aren't? And you're not only jumping this particular individual in term, in, ahead of other people who don't meet the policy, you might be jumping this particular individual ahead of other people who do meet the policy and would be eligible to be at the head of the line.
What if the burden was upon the applicant to bring it to our attention, that they believe that they met the criteria to be expedited?
Going forward, I think that would make sense. But to apply that now to any applications that have already been submitted, I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable with that, so...
Well, at, at this point, no one has alerted us that they meet that criteria because we haven't set that criteria. What if we set that criteria now and then, starting tomorrow, anyone who's in the, in the queue that believes that they meet the criteria, they would have the, the burden to bring it to our attention.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
Okay.
If you're going forward, yes.
You're going to have everybody in the queue arguing.
You're going to have to notify everyone that's already in the queue.
Mr. Craig, do you have a sense for how many plans are in the queue right now?
Uh, there are probably five to six new plans and probably about eight or nine revisions.
Five or six, eight and nine. So, we're talking about 15, 15 plans?
Approximately.
Would it take much to send out a quick email or, or letter to those 15?
We have emails for everybody.
Commissioner Macy?
How many of those people are ahead of the person in question in the queue?
At, at least the six, five or six new ones are, are ahead. I mean, I have multiple ones behind them. So, I, I guess if I'm listening to Mr. Gillum right, I'd have to contact everybody who's submitted a plan, which would be, that would, that would expand the amount quite a bit to everybody who I'm waiting on something back from or people that I'm, that I have stuff back from. I, I would probably have to contact 45 people, I'm guessing? If I have to extend this opportunity to everybody who has submitted to us, I, I'd probably have at least 45 plans or 45 people that I'd have to contact.
But just to clarify, it's supposed to, to people that are, that are already have, have submittals that are either ahead of this application in the queue or have been reviewed and then there have been comments that have been sent out. So, effectively, to everyone who submitted a plan prior to this particular, to the plan in question, regardless of what the status of that application would be.
His project is still open.
Correct.
Because if it's complete, it's moved.
Correct.
Commissioner Perush?
Okay. You emailed those 45 people. What if you get five of them to come back and say, "Oh, I have special circumstances"? How are you going to prioritize them?
I wouldn't know how to rank them if you're asking me. That's why I'm asking you. How do you, you tell me how you want them looked at and that's, that's what I'll look at.
Well, I think it's a rhetorical question to the people on this body who are considering potentially this is a solution. It's like, okay, you emailed the 45, you're saying, you know, "We're going to bump this person ahead because he has special circumstances. You know, we're just letting you know, is there anybody else that has special circumstances"? Are you going to give the builders that opportunity to say, "Oh, yeah, you know, I do have," you want to, you want to guess as to how many you're going to say, "Oh, I have special circumstances too"? And then how are you going to prioritize those?
Those, those 45, are they all residential or are you including commercial in there?
No, that's all commercial. That's not even the residential side.
And, and I, I want to make sure we're talking the same definition because when I talk residential, I include multifamily property that's used for residential purposes.
In, in terms of how, how we speak in the building department, there's one and two family and then everything else. So, multifamily apartments, condos, that, triplexes, that all fits into the commercial building code. Those are my 45 plans.
Understood, but, but my, my focus is on places where, where people live. So, the city hall, people aren't going to live there. The, the hotel, people aren't going to live there. But single family, yes. Two-family, yes. A unit within a multifamily that you deem commercial, yes. So, I'm making a distinction between that commercial and the other commercial.
I, I don't know how many would pertain directly to a, a residential unit. Again, that's not a way we, we keep in.
But would that reduce your, your 45, though, if, if you were setting only to those commercial that are for residential purposes?
I'm, I'm going to assume it's less than a number of 45, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know how many. I mean, I, I guess I wasn't realizing that's how specific the criteria was going to be. But I honestly couldn't give you an answer. Less than 45, but I don't know exactly how many.
Mr. Gillum, what if, I mean, what is the, the level of notice that needs to go out? Could we post a notice on our website? Could we post a notice somewhere else or, or is an individual mailing necessary? Could we post a notice somewhere else or, or is an individual mailing necessary?
I guess it depends upon the amount of, the timeframe that you're allowing for a response. If you're talking about a relatively short timeframe, then I think fundamental concepts of due process would provide, would require specific individual notice if there was sufficient information on file to provide the notice, and I believe that there would be. So, if you're going to allow a week or a month for a period of response, then probably some kind of published notice would be sufficient. But if the idea is to turn this around quickly, I think individual notice would be more appropriate.
I can tell you the six plans that I have between them are not residential where somebody's going to be living there. But I don't know about the revisions that are coming in or any of the other ones that are waiting.
Commissioner Gibbs.
And you have, and we, you, Mr. Craig, have working emails that people respond to if and when you should reach out to them via email, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the benefits of our new system, doing everything online is where they have to provide us with an email.
That's working. So would that be considered notice, written notice? Or could we consider, could that be considered written notice to expedite the timeframe?
You could have correspondence that's sent by email.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say an email specifically, but a document that's prepared and goes as an attachment to an email.
Sure.
The, the email address we have is the, who, the applicant, whoever applied. So it's usually a builder or an architect.
Okay.
It wouldn't be the, yeah, it's usually not the owner.
How labor intensive would it be to gather all those emails, addresses to, together and do an email blast, so to speak, to get that out?
I, I can't do a blast. I'd have to go to each individual address and send one out.
All right. And I'm trying to get a sense of how labor intensive that would be. Are, are the email addresses all in a very easy to locate place?
Yeah, I can, I can just click on the address and then click on the permit and.
I mean, is this a 10-minute job? Is it a two-hour job? What is it?
Well, I'm, I don't know who's writing the letter. If you want me to write the letter, it's going to be a, a, a long process.
If, if we.
If you prepare a letter for me, I can get it out.
If we give it to Mr. Johnson to figure out who to do the letter for.
I can, I can get the letter out, uh, in a couple hours to everybody, I imagine.
Mr., Commissioner Lavasser, we do have a motion on the table, and I know you're bringing up some good thoughts here, but we could probably handle that after we discuss the motion on the table. So if we can get through this motion, to remind everybody, Commissioner Dubbuck, you can remind everybody if I got it wrong, but essentially the motion is to direct staff to go back and look at other building departments, solicit some feedback from us to see what we can do related to policies of prioritization of building permits. Commissioner Dubbuck?
Uh, yeah, that, that is about right. And I would say like, I think that this is an important conversation. This is the conversation we need to have to establish a policy. I'm really concerned about the idea of just shooting from the hip and establishing a policy tonight to deal with one unique circumstance, as incredibly as important as it may be, I don't know that it's the responsible prudent thing to do. Now, like I said, if anyone just wants to throw a motion out there to, to skip the line, that's, I think that's as likely to, uh, have negative repercussions as trying to create a policy on the fly because it's going to be full of holes as the questions you're asking, I, I think are pointing out. So my motion is to make sure that we address this issue because I think there's a gap in our policy, but I don't know that, that just pulling a policy, you know, kind of out of the air tonight to, to address this circumstance is, is the appropriate thing to do, um, given our responsibility to care for the city for the 60,000 of us.
All right. Commissioner Macy.
Just like to clarify that the research on this new policy should happen next week or maybe even two weeks from now, so as not to interfere with the review process we're going through at the moment. Like, we're a lot looking for this by the next commission meeting.
Correct, because we don't want to slow things down anymore.
Exactly.
Agreed.
I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Any other discussion on this item? Commissioner Lavasser?
I'm going to make a motion. And, and I know I'm doing this over Mr. Gilliam's concerns, so I'm going to try to address that to the best of my ability, uh, that we, uh, make it our policy that for residential as well as, uh, persons who are residing within properties that the department deems commercial, in other words, multifamily, that our policy is to expedite, uh, emergency scenarios that deal with, uh, accessibility, uh, and that the, uh, staff, uh, sends out notice to those that are in the queue right now, alerting them that if they believe that they fall within that criteria, that they alert staff so that staff could then expedite their, uh, their, their plan and have it looked at more quickly. Uh, and that if, uh, if, uh, persons then so alert staff that they move it to the front of the queue to, to get it reviewed more quickly.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lavasser. Is there a second? Without a second, the motion fails. Commissioner Macy.
So, I'm not against doing something like this. Um, I feel, I feel like the words emergency and accessibility in there were concerning me. And also, one thing that's majorly concerning me is that we're asking them to do several hours of work that may push back their review that they, we were told might happen within the week already. So I'm, I'm, I feel like looking at this and, and making a new policy is a good idea and I am actually willing to, to make an exception, unwise as that may be, um, but I'm worried that making the exception is going to make more work than just waiting for it to take its course. Um, that said, uh, if you had a, another more specific motion, I might be interested in hearing it.
Yeah, I think we have a, a situation here where there's not a whole lot of wins for anybody. We all want to help. We all understand what common sense is. Uh, and we have actually, to Commissioner Macy's point, we have, um, some insights from our building, uh, director that, um, you know, this might even be depending on, I mean, if nobody gets sick, God forbid, that this thing could actually be done on Friday maybe or, or Monday. And if we all of a sudden petition our building department to go and spend hours along with our legal department, you know, Mr. Gilliam is going to need a couple days to draft something. You know, you basically have to put that all on pause because you know this policy change is coming and it's like, it, it concerns me that in a ironic weird way would actually delay, you know, the petitioner's permit even further. You know, trying to do something right, you've actually made the problem worse, um, let alone the risks associated. I, I don't mind taking the risks. I mean, I think that, you know, to me, helping out people in, that clearly need access to their, um, residence, that's not of, of issue or debate. But would we actually exasperate the problem by giving specific direction to the building department and legal department that would actually delay this further? Uh, you know, I think that for me is the challenge that we have. We're, we're kind of locked into a no-win situation, no matter which way we look at it.
Commissioner Macy.
So, um, this is only tangentially related, but back to Mr. Johnson, um, this new special secret plan about hiring the, the four new inspectors, uh, when is that plan going into effect?
I don't have an answer for you yet. Uh, it was, uh, there was a meeting with Howard on Friday where they worked out the broad, uh, concept of, of how they're going to approach it, but those things have to be committed to writing and I'm not sure what approvals are going to be needed on that yet. I assume I'm going to have to bring it back to this body before I can do anything with it.
At a minimum, it would require a letter of agreement with at least one of the city's bargaining units.
Okay. Mr. Craig, have your inspectors had their flu shots?
This week, we have our, uh, in-office, uh, flu shots this week, so.
Commissioner Lavasser.
I'll go back to a thought that I believe that Miss, uh, that Commissioner Macy had, which was to ask folks if they'd be willing to allow someone to leapfrog them in the queue and whether that's something that, uh, that you'd be able to do, send out the email and ask the permission, given the circumstances.
I, I would have to defer to Mr. Gilliam on whether or not that would be allowed.
Mr. Gilliam, if someone were to voluntarily swap their spot with the petitioner, is that something that is a, um, of concern?
I'm more comfortable with that.
Okay. Do we need to give any formal direction to do that or do you feel comfortable putting out that, uh?
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable because if I call somebody and, and ask them this, it's, it's, you know, again, I, you got to define what an emergency is for me because...
Well, well, what I think what we're doing is saying for this specific situation, we have somebody that has a specific situation. They petition the city commission, um, and not to say this is a one-time deal, but until we figure out what the policy is going to be, we can put that ask out there. And I think, I can't make motions, but if somebody were to make a motion, uh, in that vein to give direction to our building department just to send out a blanket email, uh, with the support of Mr. Gilliam to say, hey, somebody wants to swap spots, are you willing to do it to support this cause, um, then, you know, I would support that because it's a, it's a gap stop here until we figure out what the policy should be or what we can do.
Yeah, just to clarify, because there's a couple different ways to do this. One is to swap spots, so move someone from second to sixth or sixth to second versus allow to leapfrog, which basically would allow this person to move up incrementally in the process. So, you know, one by one by one. So, uh, Mr. Gilliam, is, is, is there one that might work, one that doesn't work, or is it about the same?
I mean, I think it's about the same. I mean, if you're talking about somebody that's in sixth position, um, if the person who's in fifth says it's okay to jump over them, then they're in fifth position. If the person who's in fourth position says it's okay, then they can be in fourth position. If the person in, who's in third position says, no, I need to have my plans reviewed because I'm going to lose a tenant or I'm going to lose a client, then I think, uh, fifth is as far as you go, so.
All right. So, so a leapfrog situation, though, uh, the only two entities or persons that would be impacted are the, to their swapping places if we, if we do a swap as opposed to a leapfrog.
Correct.
No one else would have any issues.
Correct.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I feel uncomfortable asking people that question.
We can ask it from the city commission, but do explain.
Yeah, anybody wants to come in, I'd be happy to give you those emails and phone numbers and you guys can make calls because it, I, I, I think people are going to feel in an unusual, um, position to, to bend to that if I'm asking them. Like me asking a contractor to come over and help me hang some shingles, you know? They're not going to say no.
They'll say two to four weeks.
But I don't ask.
Um, that's a fair point, but I mean, the medium of how we deliver that, I think, could be part of the motion. Any takers?
Commissioner Lavasser.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion and, and feel free to interject if you want to include some language here. I'm happy to entertain that. But my motion is that we, uh, send out emails to those that are in front of, that are in the queue in front of the individual that we're talking about today, uh, to ask them if they would be willing to swap places in the queue with this individual and explain the circumstances, that it's a, a matter of, uh, accessibility, uh, for a person's home, uh, and the, the urgent need because of, of the home not currently being accessible for them, uh, in a wheelchair.
Um, who would that letter be from? The building department, the Royal City Commission?
We have a recommendation, what would be best to come from?
Well, Mr. Craig says not. He feels like it's, um, you know, because he has direct authority of approving things, rejecting things, things like that.
I would say it should come from the commission.
Well, then let's make it from the commission then.
Okay, from the commission. Commissioner Macy?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right. I think this is a good plan, Commissioner Macy.
Oh, okay. Well, I was going to say, I wonder if we could ask, if you could say either, would you be willing to leapfrog or would you be willing to have them move up one, just so that we get the best possible maximum responses in case no one says, yes, you can swap, but number five says, okay, you can go ahead of me, which is essentially a swap. But they don't know in the queue where they are. Um, should we tell them where they are in the queue?
I think you get back to Mr. Gilliam's concerns if you say move up one. Move up to the top or move up one is probably the same argument, right? Am I mistaken in my logic or?
Well, to each individual.
Did we get beat up too much at public comment and I'm not thinking right?
Each individual, it's the same, but.
Well, I mean, if, if your goal is to get the plan reviewed, then you want them, you want this application moved to the top of the list.
Right.
Okay.
But I think the question you have to answer though too, for the benefit of Mr. Craig and his staff, what if someone says no?
Then it doesn't happen.
What if they have questions about the details? How much of the details do you want me to divulge?
Um, I think we, we'd, we'd ask Mr. Brimblatt to send us an email, what would be acceptable for him, for us to divulge.
Okay.
Anything.
Like, I can tell you, there's information on the plans that show that these plans were ready on June 4th. Do you want me to divulge that?
It's fine.
If they, if that's asked.
If they ask those questions, then yeah. I mean, I'd keep it simple and just keep it, you know, to the point and, you know, we have somebody that, you know, submitted plans on these date and, you know, they're asking to be moved ahead for this reason. You know, we're asking if you're willing to, you know, swap or leapfrog or whatever the right language the city attorney thinks is appropriate.
City attorney has nothing to do with this.
This is not as bad as a snow ordinance.
Easy for you to say. No, the, and you're, Commissioner Macy is exactly correct. It's not a question of what I think it should say, it's a, what, a question of the commission wants it to say. This is basically, this is a policy decision the commission is making tonight. And I think you have to define what the language is going to be.
Also, are we dealing with the entire plan or just the accessibility portion of the plan?
Right, part of it that doesn't deal with accessibility.
Do we ever review plans piecemeal?
Everything is accessible.
I mean.
I think it's easier just to do the whole plan.
Yeah.
I wouldn't piecemeal it out.
We're, we're talking about three hours worth of staff time here.
I mean, if they're already opening it up, they might as well because they have to look at all the pieces together anyways.
So, Commissioner Lavasser, is a motion sufficient right now for staff to have direction or is there more you need? That wasn't a rhetorical question. It was a yes or no question.
With all respect, I'm not the one you're providing direction to, so.
I, I need to know what, what you want the letter to say. If you, is that part of the motion, what you want the letter to say?
You want to make an amendment to state what you want the letter to state, say, Commissioner Lavasser?
Okay, let's see if I can do it on the fly here.
You move to amend.
I move to amend. The letter will, will read as follows. It has come to our attention that a resident of our city is in great need of modifications to his home, uh, to make it accessible, uh, due to him being, uh, confined into a wheelchair. At present, we are projecting that, uh, it will take us one to two weeks, uh, before we would be able to get to his plan for review, which is creating a great hardship for him. The city commission is asking if you would be willing to swap places in the queue with him to help address his, uh, hi- his need to make the modifications to his home. We, we ask if you are willing to do so, that you contact Mr. Craig at this phone number and you would provide your phone number, uh, to so and so. And you would provide your phone number to so inform him. We appreciate your kindness for, for members of our community.
Signed.
Signed.
Royal Oak City Commission.
Who do you want to sign it?
The Royal Oak City Commission.
The Royal Oak City Commission.
We have an amended motion. Is there a second?
We have to vote on the amendment.
I know, but you have to get the amendment on the table. We have a second by Commissioner Macy. So now we're voting on the amendment to the original motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, the motion passes. So now we have an amended original motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Dubbuck?
I'd say I really appreciate the intent here, but as I said, I think we're still establishing policy and I think we're doing it in a really messy way that's gonna cause more problems than it solves for staff. There could be any number of people and a number of names already in that queue. Someone found black mold in their home and they're currently living out of their home and paying out of pocket to live in a hotel. And they're gonna feel pressure from the building department to step back because of the circumstance. But now we're financially harming that resident. I just, I don't know that it's appropriate for us to advocate on behalf of one specific resident. We don't know the circumstances of the others. I'm not sure that's a good way to make policy. I really appreciate the intent. I really wanna fix the situation. I don't think there's a good way to do it. So as the mayor said, there are no good options here. So I don't begrudge anyone for voting aye or no, but that's, that's why I'm not supporting the motion.
Commissioner Perush?
He just said...
I understand where Commissioner Dubbuck is coming from and, you know, I'll have a little reservation with this one. But I think if we're going forward with the previous motion to determine what the new policy would be, to me, it'd be interesting to see what the feedback is from those, you know, as one point of information. You know, are people willing to do this type of thing? Are they totally against it? Do they come up and say, I have black mold in my house. What about my needs? And I think that will help inform us on what the future policy decision would be. So hopefully, we're solving a problem for an individual in need. And secondly, we garner more information to help change the policy if, if we can or if that's the best thing for this commission to do. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right. We'll see where that takes us. So this brings us to item number 10, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishments. We're gonna have a public hearing this evening, but before we do, we're gonna have Chief O'Donohue review the petitioner's request and approval for the plan of operation.
Mayor, City Commission, we do have a request from Main and Fifth LLC to approve a new proposed plan of operation. They request, they have purchased a Class C license located at 129 South Main, the old Andiamo's license. Their intent is to locate it at 505 South Main Street. Main and Fifth LLC is owned by brothers Matthew and Joseph Brahman. Sorry about that, all right? They're both 50% owners. The applicants purchased a Class C license for $175,000 and they purchased the building for $1.5 million. The applicants intend to spend approximately $700,000 on renovations, including furniture, fixtures, equipment, and inventory. The renovations also include combining the two existing spaces, 505 South Main and 108 East Fifth, into a mixed-use two-story building. The first and second floors will house a new restaurant with the liquor license. The second story will also feature approximately 3,000 square feet of new office space for a future tenant. The applicants come from a family of restaurant entrepreneurs that own 40 restaurants in Michigan, Ohio, including the Red Robin brand. Applicants grew up in the restaurant business and worked in their family's restaurants from a very young age. They currently own and operate 25 Degrees Burger and Wine Bar in Chicago, and they've done that since 2011. Check from the Illinois Liquor Control Commission reveals they have three violations and they're listed on the report. We have reached out to a supervisor in the Chicago Police Department and confirmed that they, they stated that they don't have any problems there at their 25 Degrees and believe they're responsible owners. If approved, Main and Fifth will operate as a full-service restaurant and bar. Requested hours of operation are Sunday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Thursday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Kitchen will remain open until closing each night. The menu will feature shareable salads, sandwiches, classic entrees, fish, chicken, and lamb. The applicants anticipate a food alcohol ratio to be 60% food, 40% alcohol. They have approximately, just over 6,000 square feet of usable square feet. Total proposed interior seating is 155 patrons with 15 seats at the bar on the first floor and four seats at the second-floor bar. The applicants are requesting to have three outdoor service areas. The first will be located at a, at a new rooftop terrace that will feature seating for 49 patrons, including nine seats at a bar, and then four seats at an outdoor service cafe on Main Street and two seats on the outdoor entrance on Fifth Street. The outdoor service areas will be open seasonally and must operate in accordance with all city's policies and procedures. The applicants are not requesting a dance permit and will not have dancing at their establishment. They have agreed to sign an agreement permit. No live music will be played on the rooftop terrace. Our findings indicate the applicants meet the requirements necessary to grant this license. It's a CBD business. They're just simply moving the license. They're almost the same size as Andiamo's. They seem like good applicants. And the police department does not have any objection to this request.
Any questions for Chief O'Donohue? All right, I see the petitioners here today. Maybe you can tell us a little bit more about the concept and what you guys wanna do? And by the way, first off, thank you for bearing with us tonight. Long meeting, you know. We're getting close to your hours of operation here, closing up in your plan, but, you know, building your endurance.
Good evening, I'm Attorney Salamali. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Main and Fifth. I'd like to introduce gentleman to my right, Joseph, gentleman to my left, Matthew. They're brothers. And we also have here with us tonight the landlord of the entire development. To my right, Stephen Bacall and his brother Dominic Bacall.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
So we've provided a lot of information and thank you to the chief for summarizing that. We've been working very closely with Lieutenant Moore and your department has been very helpful moving this process along. I have to say, in sitting here, we've realized one thing that we all have in common with the commissioners, with the mayor, with the police department, with everybody that was here today, is that we all care about Royal Oak and we wanna figure out how to make it better. We're here before you tonight, but this has been a very long process. We've been working on this for about a year. And I really commend these guys here on this project because they never hesitated to move this project to anywhere else other than Royal Oak. They have a history with Royal Oak. They wanna build with Royal Oak. They love what Royal Oak stands for and they wanna be a part of it. And they wanted to take, they wanted to find and they waited to find the right space. And you guys are all pretty much familiar with that building. It's right on Main Street. It's been vacant for a while. I think it's been built since 1925 and it hasn't really had any substantive development since then. So it's not really in harmony with the rest of the downtown district that we have. The price that the chief indicated that we're paying for the liquor license is a premium. We can get a much cheaper one and we try, you know, we're able to put an offer on there. But the gentleman here said, no. We don't wanna put pressure on the, on the city. They've already allocated the resources. They feel like they have enough for the downtown district. And when the opportunity presents itself, we'll be able to pay a premium for that because we respect what they do and we're willing to pay a premium for that. So I commend these gentlemen for taking that position and for waiting and being patient to do so. The other thing is, as the chief indicated, is that we're very much so in harmony with, you know, when one restaurant closes to have another one open. They understand business at their young age, not only because of the, their family's involvement with the restaurant industry but for the fact that they went out on their own and did everything from starting to wash dishes to working at the cash register to running their own company. So you really have, you're supporting small business. You're promoting an owner-operated establishment. Not only that, the landlord is also investing a lot in this development so that he can have a mixed use and bring life into an area that has been very dark for some time. And it's something that is going to make Royal Oak better. We're not exhausting any of the resources, the resources in the area. We're trying to shine light in an area that is overlooked. When you get to the end of that, like when I go walking down there and I get to that point, I know it's dead. There's nothing else for me to do at that point. They're here to help build, to let that grow. And I think that's what the city wants. That's from talking to local residents and other owners in the area feel that is, is, is what the community is about. And so we're here tonight to ask for you guys' blessings because the perfect meal sometimes needs to be paired with a perfect cocktail. And the main purpose of this establishment is not for the sale of alcohol or dancing or a bar, but is actually dining. And it's a very unique space and they have a very unique concept that we would love to have the honor to be able to bring to the city to greater the community. Royal Oak is considered one of the focal points in the metropolitan Detroit area and these gentlemen understand that. The landlord understands that. I attached to you their resume and CV of the developer. They've been doing this, they look young, but their father is one of the pillars in this, in the development community, which they make him very proud in doing that. And so they've been working with these gentlemen as well as with the police department and hopefully with the building department to try to make sure everything is what works for the city of Royal Oak so that we have a great relationship with each other. And, you know, have any questions? If the gentlemen wanna say anything?
Yeah, maybe tell us a little bit more about the concept. I mean, it's exciting to see you come to this part of town, you know, buy a local liquor license and move in. But I know in here, it doesn't really give a name or anything like that. But, but I know, you know, tell us a little bit more about what you plan to do and how you think that fits into our community.
So basically, it's a full-service restaurant bar. We're gonna be very food-focused. We've actually been doing tastings with a lot of chefs out there right now. Chefs that have been on Hell's Kitchen and things of that sort. So it's gonna be very food-focused. Our mentality is, you know, bars come and go. The longevity of an establishment is good food and that's what we're gonna focus on. And having a liquor license, you know, in this day and age is obviously a necessity. So it's gonna be an approachable menu. You know, you could take your spouse there for a date at night or you can come by for lunch. So it's gonna be kind of all walks of life. Just a very approachable, comfortable, easy environment.
Any questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Perush?
Can you just give us a description of the condition of the building? We know it's been vacant for a while and we know that it's quite old. So I, these visions of, you know, asbestos and wires hanging and stuff. What's the, what's the condition of the building these days?
And also, we also have here, sorry, before you respond, we have our architect here. You wanna introduce yourself? From Rod and Roman Architecture as well. So anything that the landlord can address, our architect is here to do that as well.
I'll join the crowd. It's a pleasure to see the board.
Sorry to overwhelm all of you. As for the condition of the building as is right now, it's actually not so bad because we've actually already gotten a demo permit where we've taken a lot of that out. There was a little bit of asbestos whenever we had first gone in there. There has been an abatement for that, so that has been taken out as well. And everything is pretty much ready to go. We've kind of been waiting at this point to get here so that way we can also get to our next meeting and, and move on the process from there. But as for what it was, it was bad. It was definitely bad. Some people were living on the second floor. I don't know who they were. I'm not sure if you guys do either. But they're out now, for sure. And we're, we're able to clean that up a little bit and a lot of it. And...
It's coming along. It's coming along. So the basse has been removed. We're on the agenda for November to get site plan approval.
Okay.
Hopefully, that all goes well. The condition is, the condition now, they demoed it down to its core. I mean, they opened up, we opened up as many non-bearing walls as possible. Wanted to have a nice, open feel. The unit is not, there was two units off of Fifth Street that were gonna connect to Main Street. So it's gonna be all one, with the exception of the vibe that's next to it. That's staying as is. And then up top would be, is gonna be proposed for office use.
When you, when you demoed it, as you say, had anyone done any improvements to like the plumbing system or the heating system? Were you still dealing with an old boiler in there?
Yes, yes. All the plumbing and electrical is gonna be completely redone.
Okay.
All new plumbing, all new electric.
So no one had renovated that at all recently?
No.
Okay.
Just the vibe unit was the only unit that has been renovated completely. The rest of the building is still 1925.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
You want to add anything?
Just, it's really a unique situation. We always strive for unique projects. And, and because we have an exposure on Main and on Fifth and if you've had the opportunity to study the plans at all, it's, it provides numerous, numerous opportunities that's really required in the restaurant industry. There, there's room for private functions. We have, you have the opportunity to rent spaces for up to 40 people at a time. There's a separate lounge component that supplements the, the primary dining room. And just even in its planning and layout, the provision of an elevator to make the building fully accessible, the fact that the kitchen ends up being a show kitchen that's placed in the, in the elbow, in the knuckle of the elbow, basically, that is visible from all aspects of the main floor. And we like the fact that it's never been touched since 1925 or whenever because there's a lot of very interesting effect in there that will become part of the experience.
Any other questions? Anything more to add? All right.
The fact that we're happy to do this in Royal Oak? No.
Well, that is good to hear. All right, we'll open up the public hearing. If you guys wanna take a seat for a little bit, see if anyone wants to talk. And then, you know, once we close the public hearing, we'll bring you back up if we have additional questions. All right, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Same rules apply as public comment. Is there anyone here to speak tonight at this public hearing? Okay, with no hands showing, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring the meeting back up to here. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns to be expressed? I think I saw Commissioner Dubbuck's hand up first. Question?
No question, but I will move for approval.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, supported by Commissioner Perush. Discussion, Commissioner Dubbuck? I'll get to you, Commissioner Gibbs. I'm just trying to follow the, the process here. Get us back on track from earlier tonight.
Yeah, it's awesome to see, you know, this old space being rehabbed and something new and exciting, you know. A new investor's coming in with $700,000 to breathe new life into it with a new, you know, exciting concept to add to our Main Street. You know, I wish you great success. You got the blessing from the chief. And so, you know, we're confident you're gonna be running a solid operation here be running a solid operation here and, you know, hope you're up and running sooner than later and can't wait to see it.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Gibbs, sorry.
I have a question. Roman numeral 12 talks, speaks of refuse disposal. It says pickup will be a minimum of five times a week. Does that mean Monday through Friday and leaving the weekends with the garbage piling up in the dumpsters or will there be pickup on the weekends? Because presumably you'll be a little bit busier on Friday and Saturday nights, right?
I think we'll be able to gauge that. Oh, sorry. No problem. We actually have internal trash storage in, for the project, but because of the limited size of that, it just requires a more frequent garbage pickup. And so I think necess, the operation itself will eventually prove itself as to what good scheduling is for the garbage pickup. And you're right, weekends do generate much more garbage, so...
I've worked at a bar before.
But this is a restaurant, not a bar.
It was a bar slash restaurant. I bartended though, but that's beside the point.
Really?
I've covered many, I've worn many hats. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, discussion points? Yeah, just welcome. I mean, I think like Commissioner Dubbuck said, it's great to see, you know, young aspiring people investing money into the community, doing it the right way, you know, breathing new life into a building. And, you know, you guys are experienced. You have a lot of experience from where you're coming from and, you know, we're excited to have you and can't wait to, you know, make a reservation once you guys open, so...
We're excited as well.
All right. Well, we're going to, we're going to call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Nice work.
Have a good night.
Take care. Thank you for sticking with us.
Our pleasure.
This brings us to item number 11, which is the public hearing for the vacation of a portion of Basset Avenue Public Right-of-Way. Mr. Twing.
Mayor, members of the commission. The city has received a request to vacate a portion of Basset Road, the north 20 feet from Woodward Avenue to the parallel alley running north-south. It is just south of 28202 Woodward. The Serenade Motel was the former use of the site. It's currently been closed down. The commission did set tonight to hold the required public hearing from, at one of your September meetings. After the public hearing is held, you do have the option to take no action, take action to refer it back for further review or discussion, or to pass a resolution approving the vacation.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Commissioner Perusch?
If I'm looking at the diagram that's attached to this memorandum, there is an aerial photograph which shows where the Serenade Motel is and then on the other side of Basset. I know that there is a, I think it's a framing shop or something like that on the corner, the 28168, and then there are cars parked there. Are those, one, two, three, four, five, six cars, are they also, are they currently parked in the other 20 feet on the other side in the right-of-way?
I believe they're parked partially in the right-of-way, yes.
Do we know if they have a license agreement to do that or are they just...
I don't recall off the top of my head.
But it's clear that someone has paved that area for parking. It's not, it's never been used as part of the street because when we paved the street two years ago, we didn't pave that area, I don't think. I'm quite certain we did not. Okay, that's my only question for Mr. Twing. Thanks.
Commissioner LaVasta.
Just so I can be really clear, the portion that we are talking about today is only on the northern part of Basset, northerly part of Basset. We're not...
That's correct.
We're not talking about vacating the southerly, southerly part that might not be used as a... And right now, if I'm understanding correctly, we have the right-of-way, if we wanted to make use of it for roadway or something of the like, we could, but it's not currently being used for that purpose.
No, it's currently a landscape area. The aerial shows, I believe it's even got a few trees on it, but primarily lawn.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, there's a petitioner here tonight. I see the petitioner. Once again, thank you, gentlemen, Nico, for spending time with us tonight, a little later than expected.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioner Dennis Cowan, Plunka Cooney, on behalf of our petitioner, Nico Mouchkares, who is here, who is, his company has purchased the property. I'm going to do something unusual. I'm going to speak for 30 seconds and then I'm going to ask you to open the public hearing because we've had some great residents we met with who have sat here for three and a half hours and I want to let them speak and if they want to stay, they can stay and then I can plead my case to you. So I'll kind of do it in reverse. If there's no objection, I just want to give you a quick update. Since we last met, we did apply for a demolition permit. We're going through that process with the building department right now. We also received from Autozone, which I attached, is their preliminary site plan and they're prepared in essence to come and stand in the shoes of Mr. Mouchkares and we're going to move that process forward with the planning department, assuming we can get, or planning division, and then the planning commission, assuming we can get your approval of the vacation of the 20 feet. And then finally, we had a meeting with the neighbors. We sent a notice to all of the 20 addresses and homes and businesses that we got from the city, the same list that was used for tonight's public hearing. And six did attend and we had a very good exchange. I think they were very supportive and I think four of them have stuck it out, so you're going to hear from them. But I'll now sit down and will, if I could reserve some time, just to come back and plead our case for the approval of the vacation request.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan.
Okay.
Any objections to that request?
No.
Okay, we're going to open up the public hearing. Who's here to speak tonight on the Basset Avenue? Yes, sir, with the fast hand. And thank you again. We appreciate you sticking it out with us tonight with some long public comment as well as an agenda item that we moved up front.
Good evening. My name is Robert Walsh. My wife, Mary, and I live at 1734 Basset. We are on the north side of the street. We are the third house off of Woodward. As we look at Woodward Avenue, we recognize that it is a primary avenue of this entire area. It is the most important commercial road in southeast Lower Michigan. It connects the downtown area with all of the northern suburbs and it's incredibly important to Royal Oak. Anything we can do to make, improve the vitality of that corridor is going to be, have a very positive impact on the community. Since we are the third house off of Woodward, anything we can do to improve the quality of the businesses that are along the road, and honestly, we look at some businesses as being good, some businesses as being significantly better. A derelict motel, derelict in its emptiness now, not wanting to cast any aspersions on anyone who may or may not have lived there. But the, the presence of that structure, that business, is less desirable than a viable retail facility going forward. We have spoken to Nick and to Dennis and we understand their plans for what they want to do. We have had an opportunity to express our concerns about what it, you know, what we wouldn't want it to be. We have gotten reasonable assurances from them. We believe that it is the right thing to do going forward. The 20 feet of grass that is the actual question for tonight has close to no value to the city whatsoever. By vacating the right-of-way, it allows the developer and Autozone to expand and fill that property with actually a parking lot that makes the business viable along Woodward and reduces the number of parking spots that you have to have on the street itself. It then turns that same 20 feet into property that will then generate property tax revenue for the city. So it becomes a win-win for everybody. We would just like to express our support for vacating the right-of-way for that 20 feet on the north side of Basset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Mary Walsh. I'm wife of Robert Walsh. At 1734, I'd just like to add that looking at the, the site that they want to vacate, it is going to allow for a little bit of parking, which is going to obviously keep the business viable, which we want. I can't see that it's going to have any negative impact on our road or anything that's going to obstruct us getting in and out or emergency vehicles getting in and out or being any kind of an eyesore. And we would really welcome a company such as Autozone as a good neighbor instead of a vacant building. So we're, we're in favor of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh.
We can serve time even more by coming together. We're Dan and Diane Stock from 1031 Vincetta. We're the second house off of Woodward.
Now, we've been in our house for 35 years and I agree with the Walshs, anything that would help Woodward Avenue because we are on that street every day. We use it all the time. And also walked, raised my children there. They would walk to school. So you'd like, if there's good business you can get in that doesn't have a lot of traffic, which Autozone wouldn't be like a McDonald's, that it would only help to improve and much better than what was there. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we've, we've been waiting 35 years or more to see those motels go away. We're halfway there and we should put nothing in the way of making this happen. You got, you got a no-brainer tonight.
And I also agree with the Walshs that that strip of land, the 20 feet, it is just a grassy strip of land and we always thought it was part of the motel that was there. We did not know it was the city's public right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Stock. Anybody else here to speak tonight at this public hearing? Yes, sir. Sorry, the, your hand was an exact match with the microphone.
My name is Jack Day. I live at 1825 Vinson Road. My house is Mr., Mr. Vinson's original residence and Mr. Vinson is the first half of Vincetta. So it's an historical home and I've owned the house since 1999. My father-in-law bought the house in 1953. Before that, it was owned by the Fredericks family from 1941. I happen to know the Fredericks and so I know a lot about the neighborhood. I know a lot about Royal Oak and I first moved to Royal Oak in 1947. This company, as far as I can tell, is headquartered in the John F. Fette Building, which is down at the end of the street and they've taken that over. John F. Fette was an original developer in Royal Oak and I knew John, played golf with his kids and my wife was best friends with Gwen Fette. So I have a lot of history here and it's very frustrating to me that I've had to get my information about this project from hearsay and whatnot, doing my own research. I think your, your rule about making these folks send out information to people 150 feet is, is a little bit frustrating for, for those of us who really know, understand the neighborhood, deep in the neighborhood. I have a brother-in-law that hit a home run from in front of the Huber's house to, over this property on Woodward Avenue before that motel was even built. So I know a little bit about the neighborhood and, and I know a little bit about what's going on here. So number one, I'd like to encourage whoever's in charge of making this stuff happen to, to notify people in a little bit broader range as far as the neighborhood goes. And I think the, the developer should know that if he's moving into a community to do some work, he should be doing more than the minimum. I have read all this documentation that I have accumulated and I see this developer has come back to the community development people July, August, and September, and I'm reading all of the work that's being done by the community development people, these letters and comments and whatnot. And they've specifically addressed things that this owner, that's about the site plan development, that he didn't redo in his second term and, and he, he just does not answer the question. He's making the city basically design the, the lot for him. And I think this is a, it shows me that there's somebody here that's trying to do the least rather than doing a little bit more than, than is required. So I think anybody who wants to be friendly in the neighborhood should be thinking in terms of what, what do I have to do to, to make the neighborhood friendly? One of the questions that I have about this site plan development is that the developer has repeatedly submitted plans to the city that show an easement between his development and the one immediately to the northwest. He's done this on, on two submissions and I don't have any idea, his explanation for why he wanted to leave that space blank has, has not been satisfying. So there are a few things about this whole site plan here that are still up in the air, haven't been addressed. And so if you people grant this variance, which I have no problem with the variance, but if you grant it, keep in mind that there's a lot of other things about this site development that haven't been taken care of and, and so this is not, not a done deal here. You're, you're talking about taking care of one of the pieces, but this developer hasn't done the work to get other pieces in line yet. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Anybody else here to speak about this project at this public hearing? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring the meeting back up to here. Do we have any questions for Mr. Twing or the petitioner based on what we heard at public comment or at the public hearing? Commissioner Perusch?
Just a couple of things. I believe Mr. Cowan emailed to you late this afternoon a copy of the original site, not site plan, plat map for the subdivision. And if you look at it really carefully, you can see why the bump out was originally created. The street to the north, Vinson, that Mr. Day referenced, his house is at the end of it, has the improvement that was originally anticipated by Mr. Basset and Mr. Vinson a long time ago when they, when they platted this subdivision. There's an island there and the street was paved a long time ago with that island. Basset originally was platted the same way. There was room for another island and a wider space in its intersection with Woodward to allow for that island. The street was never paved, so that island never went in. But the additional 20 feet on either side is still there, which would have been developed as road with an island had it been paved a long time ago when Vinson was paved, but it wasn't. So when we paved it two years ago, we just paved it the normal street width all the way up to Woodward. So we've left ourselves with two sections of 20-foot right-of-way, which has absolutely no use whatsoever to anybody, except for a developer like this. And if you look at the original plat map as well, you can see how the lots along Woodward Avenue, those are little tiny 20-foot lots, which were sold individually to developers, allows for this crazy kind of very narrow area, especially in this part of Woodward, which makes it extraordinarily difficult to redevelop because of the narrowness of it, which is why they have the parking issues that they have and which is why every developer that has developed along Woodward Avenue has, has had these kinds of parking issues. The last thing I'll say is that we have lived in Royal Oak since 1975. Our first house was five houses off of Woodward on Webster, very close to what was the Oak Motel, which was another notorious motel, which the city with an incentive of block rent monies was able to purchase from the hotel owner and eliminate. It was a blighted property. We contributed half with block rent funds, the developer or the owner contributed the value of the other half and we got rid of an awful, awful, awful motel. Since that time, we've managed to eliminate a couple more. My goal in life, before I leave this community, is to see them all gone. I don't know that I'll necessarily make it, but I want to see this one gone because this Serenade has been a problem over the years. All of the motels have been terrible problems over the years. We don't get the police reports annually of the, the things that happen at these hotels like we used to, but they're, they are a blight to the neighborhood in many, many ways. And the fact that this one is going to be going away, I'm thrilled. I'm absolutely thrilled. So anyway, that's, that's my view on the issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Perusch. Commissioner Gibbs?
Is there parking on both sides of the street of Basset? I guess Mr. Twing would be the person to ask.
I don't know if the north side has any restrictions or not. Obviously you can, at least the Woodward portion, you can see they pull in on the south side.
They pull in on the south side, right. But I, I mean, further down towards the residential area, if, if there's, I'm concerned about parking for Autozone going into the neighborhood as it has for some of the restaurants that are along Woodward. You know what I mean? I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking because also I guess how many parking spots can we fit into this vaca, right-of-way vacation? Because that's what you'll be using it for.
It's going to be a whole row, I believe it's eight or nine spaces. That's the whole reason for the request is that it gives us the additional space we need to maximize the parking. So that would be, is it nine, Tim?
Nine spaces.
It's nine, it would, it would add an additional nine spaces.
But, yeah, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, how it's going to affect the...
So we're going to achieve the objective you're talking about, which is to add additional parking to the project, which is what we want to, what we want to accomplish.
And who, what is it that parks on the other side, on the opposite side of the right-of-way? It's a framing shop, is that what you said?
It's like a framing art gallery type store.
Well, it's, I believe it's, it's vacant right now.
Oh, is it?
It's vacant, yeah. In fact, there's two vacancies in those three, in the, in the three buildings to the south right now, two out of the three are vacant.
I know that there's one in the middle, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think in, you know, I know this was brought up earlier. I, I believe that maybe the, the businesses in that block that's to the south asked if they could use that as, as additional parking because that's also, right-of-way, that to the best of our knowledge, has never been vacated either. So in, in essence, what a vacation is, is when you, when you file the plat, the developer in, in essence allocates property for roads. So when it's not used for that purpose, as in this, we're simply asking that it be reallocated back to the private sector and be put back on the tax rolls, is basically what we're asking that occur here. And then obviously we'd be able to use, the developer would be, and owner would be able to use the property. That's why it's a straight vacation and not a sale because the city never paid a dime to acquire the property. It was allocated in the plat in 1915. And from the best we can tell, and certainly since 1955, when the hotel was built, motel was built, that property has never been used for anything. So it's truly been just... So it's truly been just an extra space, a piece of property that's 1,800 square foot, about the size of a lot of backyards in Royal Oak. And we're going to put it to good use with respect to this project. So we would appreciate your support.
And just as a quick question to Mr. Twing, I mean, this is just one part. We're talking about the vacation. They would still have to go back to zoning and planning and get any variances if they requested, and a lot of those parking issues and discussions would take place in those forums, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. This is not tied to any particular site plan. If you vacate it, the vacation, the property will go to the current property owner. They could submit AutoZone plans, or they could withdraw those and submit plans for a whole different business. The vacation itself is not tied to any site plan, any use, anything. It's an action in and of itself.
And I can tell you, personal experience driving automobiles that have, one has well over 200,000 miles, that, you know, the frequency, at least in the AutoZone plan, O'Reilly's, those type of stores, you know, you get a handful of people, but I've never seen mass, you know, traffic. It's not like everybody on their dinner hour is going to buy an intake manifold. You know, it's, you know, they order it, they distribute. I've never had an issue. I mean, there's always seems to be plenty of spots when I go there. I actually think it'll be low use, low-impact use for the property.
And I agree. And they probably won't have 50 cars in the parking lot at 9:00 p.m.
No, not at all.
Or even at 8:00 p.m.
We close... They close at 9:00 o'clock, so there won't be any cars there after 9:00.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing or the petitioners? Mr. Dubuck. Commissioner Dubuck, I'm sorry. Commissioner?
Yes, real quick. I think this is an appropriate use of this space, but I'm just curious. Right now, there's a couple of trees there. I know we passed a tree ordinance a while back. How would this space interact with that ordinance? If those two trees come down, would the developer be required to replace those trees elsewhere on the property?
If it goes through site plan approval, it'll be addressed as it goes through that process.
According to the ordinance that we've established. I'm just curious with the... Is there any intent in the site plan to have any sort of greenery, water runoff, shrubbery, rain garden, anything to help make up for the loss of permeable space that this, you know, albeit small space of land represents?
Good evening, members of the board. Tim Ponton, the owner of Stonefield Engineering and Design, 28454 Woodward, Royal Oak. Yeah, just to answer your question, we would mitigate onsite any loss that we would have overall in terms of trees onsite. There still will be the sidewalk and some green space that will be still owned by the city, so we're only taking over 20 feet, which is essentially just our side of the sidewalk. So the sidewalk out to the street would still be city property, which would still have some green space. In terms of stormwater management and pervious versus impervious surfaces, it's going to ultimately be reviewed and approved by MDOT, because this is an MDOT road. And whatever standards that they have for us, we will meet and likely exceed those.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Commissioner Lavassar?
The memo that we received from city staff indicated that, say, planning application, you've asked to put that on, postpone further review of that. I'm just wondering what's going on there, why the delay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think what ultimately happened, and this also addresses one of the concerns of the residents, what ultimately happened was that the developer's responsibility is to come in and obtain this portion of land to make this a viable development. Now, based on his agreement with the potential tenant, they will be coming in on their own, independent of us. So we were really trying to separate those two things. To act in good faith, we did want to provide a conceptual plan of the potential tenant and who would be coming here, to be very open and honest with the city and the residents about what the overall plan for this project is and the need for this additional right-of-way. Now, separate of us, under a different application, the tenant will be coming in and providing plans and obtaining their approvals. But so we were never trying to not move the building, or we were just trying to provide a very conceptual sketch showing why this right-of-way was needed. And you're going to have another bite at the apple when the applicant comes forth with the site plan.
You have your demo permit?
We've applied for the demo permit and are waiting to obtain that.
All right. Do you have a sense for when will come tumbling down?
I think, based on the discussions with the building official tonight, we have no answers on timing for permits.
Too soon.
No, as soon as we obtain the permits, the intention, the full intention is, the applicant's office is right next door to this. My office is also right next door to this. We really want the building to come down, so...
Okay. I take you have absolutely no plan of reopening the hotel that's there. All right. And I even wonder from staff whether that's legal viability. I don't know the answer to that.
It doesn't... It doesn't... I mean, there's... That's not happening.
And I do want to add that actually, the office sent me an email that you received. I don't know if you know this, because I know you were out. But we did get an email notification from the building department today that they're processing the demolition permit. I think it's a standard-issue kind of thing. I think, as you heard Mr. Craig say earlier, they plug things in where they're moving through the process. So it looks like it's moving through the city's internal process, and we're going to act on that demo permit as soon as we receive the authorization.
Is the financing in place to demolish and move forward with that?
Absolutely, yes, it is.
The only thing that holds up a demolition permit is the disconnects. They have to provide proof that they've disconnected electrical service, water service, and gas service. Once that's provided, they'll get a demolition permit.
And we'll all let you know, and we'll have a demolition party. But the residents who waited here all night get the first crack.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Is this a building that has asbestos in it? You said it was built in the '50s, early '50s, right? Mid-'50s?
There's been asbestos testing, and whatever abatements need to occur will be handled appropriately.
Thank you.
So just to confirm, you guys have purchased the property. You've applied for the demo. You're working expeditiously, as fast as you can in that world, to get it demoed. And now you're here asking for the vacation. And once that happens, we'll have a plan in front of planning for a site plan, and we'll have this conversation again. We'll see more details, and then we'll continue to move forward. But nothing is holding you back from demolishing this building?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Lavassar?
Do you need this in order to proceed with the planning?
Yes. Because the way it works with a national tenant is, you're actually, Royal Oak is in competition with San Antonio, Texas, with Los Angeles, with all their markets. And how it works is, the property has to be all put together, and then it goes into their queue, so to speak, for all their approvals. They cannot approve this to move forward unless we have the property assembled.
Right.
So let's beat San Antonio, L.A., and Boston and get this in Royal Oak.
I'm going to move the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Lavassar, or a second, second by Commissioner Perush? Discussion. All right. With none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Good luck. Got speed. See you back again.
All right. This brings us to item number 12, approval of the anti-discrimination and anti-harassment policy. Is... We have Dennis? Okay, sir. The floor is yours.
All right, good evening. So a couple of months ago, I asked you to approve a contract with Eisenberg &amp; Associates, which is an attorney firm that also represents MMRMA, which is their liability carrier. And just to recap, I just, I went around to different cities to look at sexual harassment training that they were doing. That's something that the city hadn't been doing for a long time. We identified Eisenberg &amp; Associates. We started working with them after the approval that you gave us to move out with the training. And in our initial discussions, it became obvious that the policy that we had in place was actually very deficient. It's an old policy. The original policy is from 1987. We made some minor changes to it in 2013, but for the most part, it was heavily outdated, especially given the fact of what's going on in today's society, the Me Too movement, and everything else. It was very critical that we had a solid policy in place and updated this accordingly. So we've been working on the new policy, since your approval of the training. Eisenberg's firm, and Carrie Cahill in particular, who works for the firm, was very gracious to offer the assistance in developing that policy as part of the initial cost package that I brought to you, so there's no increase in costs as a result of the service, part of that because she is a resident of Royal Oak, and she really appreciates living here. So that was a nice gesture. So we're working on that policy with her, also with the Labor Council, and also with the city attorney's office. So what you have in front of you is the policy that came out of that process. We also had some feedback from different department heads. And, you know, after the back and forth, we come up with what you have now. So basically, what I'm asking you to do tonight is to approve the policy you have in front of you. And once that's approved, we can move ahead in what the training is initially scheduled and get that going.
Any questions for Mr. Vandeleer? Mr. Gillum?
I have a question for Mr. Vandeleer, just one additional comment. The action we'd be asking you to take tonight would be to approve the policy as presented with one amendment, which would be to delete the second-to-last paragraph on page five regarding intentionally false complaints. We determined earlier, and we had discussion with the commission, that that paragraph would be redundant. We don't need to have that in the policy itself.
Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of the policy.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Dubuck. Discussion. Commissioner Perush?
I just want to commend all of the people who are involved with this. I've been involved with a number of organizations, I think we all have, who, number one, have never developed a policy, and number two, as a result, have incidents within their employment community that beg for a policy and that begs for training. And they ignore it, and bad things happen. So the fact that the staff recognized that this is something that needed to be updated and needed to be revised, and that the entire city staff and city hall and all departments are going to undergo the training, I think is a terrific thing. And I think it's something that, as a community, we ought to be very proud of.
Commissioner Dubuck?
I'd just say, you know, thanks to staff for taking the initiative on this and making sure that we're getting this updated so that the city is, continues to be a wonderful place to work.
Any other discussion? Again, this is really, really important. And, you know, sadly, it took us a while from 1987 to get this updated, but no one can doubt the amount of effort and work that our team put in to make sure, in light not just of recent events, but also making sure that our workplace in the city of Royal Oak is free of harassment and opening and welcoming place to be. And this is just one of those reflections, and, you know, kudos. Thank you.
Thank you.
The training, by the way, for the people listening at home, this isn't going to be online training. When you do something, you do it right, you take it seriously. This is going to be face-to-face training with experts for all of our employees, starting with our management supervisors, and everybody's going to be required to take it. This is essential to having a successful program and making sure that everyone understands the policies, why these policies are in place, and the benefit of these policies, but most importantly, making sure that we protect everybody in the city of Royal Oak's workplace. So I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Vandeleer.
Thank you.
This brings us to item number 13, approval of the September Traffic Committee Resolution. Mr. Callahan?
Good evening. Good evening. Been waiting to come up here. Traffic committee met late September on the 23rd. Dan Goddick was the chairperson that evening. He was here earlier, but he has a very early morning scheduled, so he couldn't stay late. We had four items that we discussed at the Traffic Committee on that date. The first item had to do with signs to prohibit blocking the intersection at 14 and Fair Street. The second item we discussed was evaluating a traffic concern on South Wilson between 11 and Fifth Street. Unfortunately, the TIA got out there about a week after we started our construction. So we have really good data, what takes place on a street adjacent to a road under construction. But there wasn't anything unusual about that or truly out of the ordinary numbers. But we, the Traffic Committee, did request to come back after the construction's over to measure traffic and see what the comparison is. The third item we discussed, a little bit more in detail, was five streets between Woodward and Coolidge that have some pretty unusual traffic situations occurring. And we're going to hopefully meet with them and discuss options for traffic calming in their neighborhood. And finally, they discussed a recommendation from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee to move forward with our proposal for pedestrian refuge islands and traffic calming on Main Street at Sixth and Seventh.
Questions for Mr. Callahan? Mr. Perush?
I'll move approval of the resolutions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion. Commissioner Gibbs?
I just want to commend Mr. Callahan on our discussion at the... I was the only one there who's here now. But at the traffic meeting, or the pedestrian safety meeting, it was very involved, it was very detailed, and so many things were considered. And I think we covered more ground in that meeting than has been covered in a long time. It was a great meeting, so I'm glad that we came to this. Good job.
Anybody else? Commissioner Lavassar?
I think this is a... I'm thinking specifically Main Street between Sixth and Seventh. It's a good start to make that a little bit safer area. But I'm wondering what would be the protocol, the next steps, if we wanted to explore other avenues, such as, as Mr. Ashley indicated, putting a pedestrian light there? Or if we wanted to create permit parking in the area immediately around Royal Oak Manor? What would be the protocol? What would be the approach at that rolling?
First of all, the traffic signals at Sixth Street have been studied in depth. It is very close to the railroad tracks, and the railroad and MDOT are both opposed to any sort of signal at that location that could potentially cause vehicles to back up on the tracks while waiting for a pedestrian. So we are looking into using the lights that we took down at 11 Mile Road and William Street, which are push-button that just flash. They give a signal to the drivers with some very high-powered LED lights, let's say a pedestrian is crossing in this area. That's one thing that we're looking at, as opposed to just the standard unlighted pedestrian crossing signs that are normally used. There's not a lot of other tools in our tool belt that are cost-effective or don't involve rebuilding the whole roadway. So we're going to try what we've used before and see if that helps out, and it gives some confidence to the pedestrians for that location. And your question about permit parking, in the area around the Royal Oak Manor, that's in the Central Business District, and that's typically handled by the downtown Development Authorities Parking Committee, because they handle the parking on the city streets. They dictate the times of the meters, what areas are meters, what areas are not meters. And that would be the avenue to go pursue that, not the Traffic Committee.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, there's two different aspects as far as the flashing light to warn, not to stop traffic, but to warn them, hey, look out, there could be pedestrians here. Is there something more that you need in order to get something like that in front of us?
Actually, at this point, if the Traffic, if the commission approves the fourth resolution here, that tells us we need to go forward and design this up in detail where we can actually bid it out for construction. Right. In the next couple of months, we'll be putting together budgets for 2019, 2020, and we would try to include that in a budget for a project for that timeframe. So it would be constructed sometime after July 1st of next year, if that all goes through.
Okay. The other issue goes to the DDA, and how do we get that in front of the DDA so that we get the recommendation? Directing that more toward Mr. Johnson than...
I was going to say, Tim Twing is the staff representative for the DDA, and requests such as this have gone directly to the DDA themselves, so people can come to the DDA meetings and make those requests. There are no areas of permit parking in the DDA boundaries where they have their... There are no areas of permit parking in the DDA boundaries where they have their parking committee oversee the parking, that I'm aware of, and all areas in the DDA's parking boundaries have meters right now. And there was a decision seven years ago to make sure that all those spaces were metered.
Commissioner Gibbs?
If I may just add, I've spoken with Mr. Ashley about this, and he is working with the DDA, and my recollection is he plans to attend the next meeting, so it's in progress.
All right. We have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us to item number 14, recommendations for non-paving alternatives for Mount Vernon Boulevard.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. You asked for a summary of the alternatives in maintenance, which we will provide with as a summary of what we have been doing, the approximate cost of what we've been doing on the road. We did consult with Oakland County Road Commission on maintenance possibilities for the road, and they said, based on the condition of the road, we're not doing, we're doing a pretty good job overall. So the recommendation, there's no resolution for you, and I don't think the recommendation is to just keep doing what we're doing and try and do it more frequently if we can. Of course, I'd just point out that the more time we spend doing this road, that's less time we're doing something else. We used to probably spend more attention to this road when there were 70 SEIU people, not 53, so that's always an issue. I also want to point out that this is a long-term problem. I started here in 1997, and this was one of the first problems I had to deal with, and it was a problem prior to 1997, and it'll probably be a problem after 2027.
Mr. Rassell, we had a couple of questions come up in public comment about limestone gravel. Can you address those questions or concerns to tell us a little bit more about that process?
We could add gravel to it, but when we come back and regrade the road, it just gets churned up into it. The problem is, the road doesn't drain. If you've been out there, which I'm sure you have, you will notice the road is lower than the median and lower than the shoulder of the road. The road is basically the ditch.
Questions for Mr. Rassell. Commissioner Macy?
So I thought, I thought what the residents were saying was that adding the limestone might make it not be the ditch anymore, like if we, if there were, you know, I don't know, every six months, there was another layer of limestone put down?
You would have to add a significant amount of gravel or limestone to raise the road up. The road is at the low point.
But at the moment, it's going to keep getting worse, right? It's not going to get any higher if we don't do anything. Our only option to make it higher would be to add some surface.
You would have to add a significant amount to raise the road, and then it's an issue of where it's going to drain to.
Basically, it would mean that the resident's property would then become the ditch.
Other questions for Mr. Rassell? So, Mr. Rassell, the recommendation you have right here is just to continue grading it from time to time?
Yes, correct. Grading and blading, but possibly increasing the frequency with which we do that.
Commissioner Lavassar?
The price that we have here for grading and for blading, is that an external expense, or is that an internal allocation of labor?
That's an internal cost, and we spend more on road maintenance on this road than we get under Act 51 money. We get about a little over $8,500 in Act 51 money, and currently, just for road maintenance of grading it so far this year, we've spent over $7,500. That does not include snow and winter maintenance.
Commissioner Macy?
What would be the cost of adding the limestone?
I'll have to defer to the engineer on that. I mean, once again, there's no guarantee it's going to work, even if you add it.
I got it.
It's sort of like throwing good money after bad.
I was going to say, off the top of my head, I can't give you a cost, because the road is, the road is designed at the grades that it are at now. Granted, the road is designed to have crowns in certain areas and slope to the outside edge in other areas, and the only recommended thing that we would say would be to add enough gravel to keep it smooth, don't add enough gravel to raise it up a foot in one area and start flooding out other areas of the city. We have drains in the road that have flat covers on them, and if you want to raise the grade of the road up, you're going to have to spend money to raise the grade of all those drains. It's, it's something that is, wouldn't be recommended.
Commissioner Macy?
So, sorry, I thought that it sounded like the roads had been kind of scraped down over time, but the drains are at the level of the current road?
The drains are in the edges of the road, they are at a specific elevation, and the road should be crowned to either pitch to the outside edge of the road, where those drains or water can run along those pathways and into the drains, or in some section of the road, the middle is a little bit higher than the outside edge, so it all pitches to the outside edge, and that's where those drains are at.
Okay, and it sounded like you said another possible option, which is to add limestone gravel to, I mean, I drove it actually here tonight. There's like potholes, I mean.
Yeah.
Potholes are a maintenance issue on gravel roads, so I don't want to speak for Greg, but I'm sure he's going to come forward and talk about pothole issues.
So I get my, my specific question is, does filling the potholes with gravel do something?
It makes them smooth until a car runs over it and stops and grinds the gravel out of it. It's not a permanent fix. It's just a temporary fix. Next time a car goes down the road, it kicks up the gravel, and the gravel leaves the hole.
I mean, I think we get that there's no permanent fix, that's, other than paving, and I think we've got that, like there's, it's, we're throwing, as you say, throwing this, this money towards this road that I understand would be much easier if we were just paved to maintain, but given that it's not being paved, I'm wondering what other options there, there are, even if they're not an imperfect and impermanent option.
Well, and that's where we go back and blade it and try and scrape out the potholes kind of thing, but, but just filling them with gravel or coal patch, it works its way out.
Whenever it's wet.
Whenever it gets wet, or traffic or stops and goes on it as well. Actually, I drove the road last week, it's actually in pretty good shape right now, and then...
There's nine of those.
There you go. How it can change so quickly. Sorry, Commissioner Macy?
I mean, so I'm hearing from staff the same thing, that it's like, we're not, we're not going to be having a long-term positive impact on this road by doing any of these things, but we still are hearing from the residents, you're not, you're not doing anything for us on this road, you're not doing anything for us on this road, and I, I just wonder if putting a layer of limestone down and letting them see what the impact is, if that will have any effect. I mean, I hear you saying like, oh, it's useless, it's useless, but are we, we should try, maybe? I don't know.
Well, it's their, I mean, I kind of agree. I mean, I think it's their road, they pay taxes, they pay to the road millage, you know, giving it a year to continue doing what we're doing with blading and grading, and then blading and grading, and then, you know, maybe put a couple deliveries of limestone gravel on there just to, to, you know, see how it goes? Does it help? Does it make the road smoother? It's all temporary, we realize, I think Mr. Rassell is 100% correct, in 2027, we will still have this problem on Mount Vernon. It's, it's not fixable to have the best of both worlds, but if we can try it, then we can have that experience curve and that information to come back, you know, a year from now and say, okay, we did these things, was the road better? Is it satisfactory? I mean, we've tried every solution out there to, to make this work within a relative, you know, you know, without, you know, spending $100 million to do it. You know, I, I think it's a reasonable approach, if anything, to, to see how it works and let the residents who are most impacted by this, you know, give us their answer, if they like it or if they don't like it. That's my opinion. Commissioner Perush?
In terms of the limestone, I shudder to think of the cost, given the length of this road and the fact that it's, it's a boulevard, so that it's actually two roads, and given the length of it, it's going to be extraordinarily expensive even to add just a small layer of asphalt, limestone. The other thing that I'm concerned about, having lived on a gravel road, is that the gravel doesn't stay in the roadway. When it bounces out of the potholes and cars go down that road 30 miles, 35 miles an hour, it bounces into the yards. There's nothing there to keep it in the roadway, and as a result, it ends up in people's yards, where they, gets run over by lawn mowers, projectiles are flying all over, you're trying to pick it out of your grass, it's a mess. So there's a huge downsized, I think, to adding the gravel to the road, just because of the impact on the lawns that are adjacent to it with no barrier. To me, I would not want that. If I was a homeowner, I would not want that in front of my house. I would rather deal with the mud and the potholes than have gravel flying into my yard, which it's going to do.
Maybe we get, you know, we continue moving forward with the grading and blading, and then get an estimate on the, on the gravel, and bring that back here at a later date to see if it's worth the, I mean, if it's five grand, I'm totally willing to, to try that. If it's 500 grand, I agree with Commissioner Perush, I think that is not the best use of funds for a neighborly experiment. Commissioner Lavassar?
I, I agree with that sentiment, and the question is what Mr. Rassell and Mr. Callahan need from us tonight. I mean, first of all, I'd like to see more grading, more blading, and whether you need a resolution from us, or if you are simply going to, can move forward and do that yourself without a resolution.
We respond every time the residents from Mount Vernon, we go out there and check it. You know, we don't, you know, it's just a couple of potholes and grade it, we wait until there's several, because we run the equipment, we do the road all at the same time. I mean, so far this year, we've graded, I think, five times, and I think we've bladed it another three to four times on top of that. It's winding up where we probably won't do it again until spring, simply because of the weather conditions deteriorating, but we do respond to all the requests.
All right.
And once again, this historically comes up whenever someone starts a petition drive, it comes up, the issue reaches this commission, we discuss it, and we boot the can down the road and do exactly what we're doing right now.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you right, you, you don't need a resolution for us in order to increase the frequency of grading and blading?
No, I do not.
All right. Now, the next question is to explore the possibility of the limestone or gravel and to tell us what the cost would be and what the ups and downs of that would be. Is that something you need a resolution for?
No, I mean, we can bring it back, but we don't need that direction.
I'm sorry, I would prefer to have specific direction. Yes, I would ask you to make a resolution, and I would also prefer to have one with regard to, how much more effort do you want us to put into this road? A 25% increase, a 50% increase, 100% increase?
Well, right, right now, if I'm reading this correctly, we've graded it five times, and we've bladed it three or four times?
It's so far, I'm trying to, over the past 12 months, we've been out there, yes, we've graded it five times in the last year, and we've bladed it another three to four times.
Okay, so if I were to say 25%, does that give you a direction, or do you need something different?
It gives us an idea of how much extra effort the commission would like us to put into this road, and that is useful to us.
I, I guess, I guess you say grade it 12 times a year. You know, the problem is, we're responding as is needed now, all right? Put a number on it, fine, it's the third Wednesday of the month, go out and grade the road. Boss, it doesn't need to be graded. Nope, we told the commission we were going to grade it 12 times a year, it's the third Wednesday of the month, go out and grade it.
Yeah, and that's my concern with putting a number on it, is that we're not, I mean, I, I think my perspective is, is I simply want it to be addressed more frequently and not wait until the matter gets severe before it's addressed, but, you know, perhaps address a little bit more frequently before it becomes a real severe issue. So, so I'm hesitant to put that firm number on it as suggested by Mr. Johnson, but the question again is whether that's sufficient direction for you?
Sufficient for me, I mean, we'll make it happen, but, but, I mean, like, you know, it can, it competes with other needs. You know, we have other priorities and that kind of thing, the residents may have to wait a week until we have time to get out there and grade it. It's not, it's not like the fire department where there's a pothole on Mount Vernon, go out and grade the road.
I think that's understood.
Okay, but my, my motion is that staff explore the possibility of adding limestone or gravel to the road and come back to us with a cost estimate to do so, and their recommendations of whether that's practical or creates more problems than it solves.
Okay.
Is that, does that sufficient direction? Yeah?
Motion by Commissioner Lavassar, seconded by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Macy, you got to get that arm up there.
That's not really on this though.
You know, you got like a finger wave here going on.
I know, but it's not actually on, it's on the other part of it, so never mind.
Okay, all right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Wait, can I ask something more?
Commissioner Macy, you have the floor.
Mr. Rassell, can I have?
Mr. Rassell?
All right, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So the, the 5 to 7 and the 3, whatever it is that you're doing the grading and blading this year, that's already an increase from previous years, right?
That's probably about average.
Oh, it is about average, okay, that's all, that's my question.
It's about average, at least three times a year. We usually do it as soon as we can, when it's dry enough in the spring. We'll do it once or twice in the summer, and try and do it once in the fall, as weather permits. The potholes you saw, there was a significant amount of rain this last weekend, that's what happens on an improved road. And as I said, the road commission came out and took a look at it, people talk about ditches, road commission said, said, well, you could put ditches in, but they'd be really steep and really deep, and you don't really have a lot of options for what you can do with ditches.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rassell. All right, this brings us to item number 15, the award of the Royal Oak Civic Center Landscaping Irrigation Package. Mr. Fenton?
Good morning, I think. Getting there. We had an original award made for connectivity for the Civic Center on August 13th. There was one item that was not part of that package that is now before your consideration tonight, that is the landscaping irrigation package. Proposals were received from 17 firms. The award recommendation we're making is based on the proposal that was the lowest qualified bid for the scope of work, and that is WH Cannon at $244,300. That figure is within the connectivity budget, and actually, as of today, we are $460,474 under budget for that element of this project.
Questions for Mr. Fenton? Commissioner Lavassar?
There was a little ambiguity as far as the number of proposals received, and I couldn't tell if it was 17 or three, and just wanted to get an idea of what, why on the first page of references, 17 proposals received, but there's only three that appear in the...
There were 17 received, the lowest qualified bidders in order, we narrowed them down to the final three for the recommendation letter.
All right, so the other 14 were all higher priced?
Yes, if you want to jump in.
Actually, it was 17 bidders for the entire package of the connectivity work. There was only three bidders for landscaping, and I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. But that was 17 bids across the entire connectivity package, and we awarded, I think, five other packages before.
The six, I think.
Six, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Fenton? Mr. Becker? Mr. Dubbuck? Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yep, just, you know, I recall we gave commission to ensure that all the work being done on this project is union or prevailing wage, does it adhere to that agreement?
Yes, it does.
Cannon's, yeah, they're a union contractor.
Awesome, thank you. I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. Commissioner Lavassar?
I have a concern with, first question is the timing of the breaking ground on the City Hall and the police station. I believe last I saw, we're looking at perhaps November of this year before that would happen, and then perhaps, Mr. Johnson, you have some feedback there.
Well, actually, I'm going to call on Mr. Becker, because he's the one that's constantly advising me as to what the, the current projections on groundbreaking are.
Oh, on, on City Hall?
City Hall and police.
Okay, we're really, we're expecting the second week of November.
For City Hall?
For, for, yeah, groundbreaking at City Hall. We know we would definitely not take over that lot until after November 6th.
My, my concern is with the loss of that parking in that area with all the parking that we've otherwise lost in our downtown, and my preference, well, we, we know my preference would, would not have been to go with this...
would, would not have been to go with this development in the first place, but my preference is if we're gonna move forward, that we at least delay this until the new parking structure is ready. Is that something that is a possibility here?
Is that a question for either myself or Mr. Becker?
And it may even be Mr. Gillum, because, because of the legal requirement with Royal Oak, I'm sorry, Central Park Development Group.
Well, I, I think with the delays associated with the, the change to the Henry Ford occupancy, I don't know that the, the timing with Henry Ford is, with the timing with Central Park Development Group is specifically an issue. I think the, the issues are more practical considerations with the completion of the city's aspects of the, the development with the city hall and the police department, so.
I would answer as a business item that, while possible, it may incur financial ramifications on the project that were not budgeted for and may in effect kill the police department and the city hall.
Commissioner Dubak?
I'd say, I, I think we actually had a detailed discussion on this maybe a month ago, where the, the cost implications of a multi-month delay were far beyond what it would, the impact of actually utilizing our brand-new deck that has yet to be at capacity. So the myth of loss of parking in our downtown is, remains a myth, because we do have a brand-new deck that still has not been full. So I think we continue to direct people to that deck, which it has been getting a lot more publicity lately and more usage, but I've yet to, on any day of the week, any night of the week, drive by that deck and have it say less than 200 spaces available. So loss of parking in our downtown is a, a myth, and certainly not one that, while folks might want to use it, when convenient, we're not going to pay millions of dollars extra for this project to perpetuate it.
Yep. Commissioner Perush?
In terms of the farmer's market, the least busy time of the year is this period of time from November until April and early May. So if you're gonna start a construction project, I would much rather start it now when the demand for parking is significantly lower than it is in the spring and summer. I mean, I can't imagine starting this project and impacting the farmer's market in May or, or April and having it go further and yet into another growing season into the following year. The more you can get done in the winter when there's less demand on the parking, the better, which means you start, you start quickly now.
And I think that statement holds true, not just for, you know, the farmer's market, but, you know, Royal Oak overall sees a little downtick in commerce, you know, in the wintertime for demand for parking. I mean, people aren't, you know, the outdoor dining isn't here, so businesses' footprints shrink a little bit, and people aren't out as much in the winter. Commissioner Gibbs?
We have a completion date for the new parking structure? An estimated completion date?
June 2019.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Got a motion on the table?
Do we have a?
I made the motion.
Yep. All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. All right, this brings us to award of city hall trade contract work. Item number 16 on the agenda.
So in order to stay on budget and on schedule, we are making the following trade contract recommendations based on lowest qualified bids for the scope of work that was RFP'd. The packages are masonry, structural steel, waterproofing, fire suppression, plumbing, and electrical. In respective order, we're recommending awards to Brazen and Greer, BNA Structural Steel, DC Buyers, Conti Fire Suppression, Guideline Plumbing, and Triangle Electric. In total, the award is $3,360,965. This does put us within 1.2% of our estimates for city hall right now. As of today, looking at bids that will be before the commission at our next meeting, it appears that we may be bringing in the new city hall slightly under budget when all said and done. These initial figures actually put us about $200,000 over budget. We believe we'll be making that up again with the remaining bid package that'll be before you on, on November 12th. And as I had said in, in my last agenda item, our connectivity budget is $460,000 under as well. So we do have a little bit of wiggle room right now. Not a lot, but a little.
Questions for Mr. Fenton or Mr. Becker? Commissioner Dubak?
It appears for every one of these awards, they were all recommended for the lowest qualified bidder?
Correct.
All right. And same question, prevailing wage, union shops?
Correct.
They're all union contractors.
Great, I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there support?
Yep.
Support by Commissioner Perush? Discussion? With not a call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right, this brings us to the item number 17, which is the approval of the 2019 city commission meeting schedule. I assume Mr. Johnson's gonna cover this one?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We're just recommending that we continue using the second and fourth Monday schedule. Since we've initiated that, on average, that has saved us three to four meetings a year that we haven't had to move. That happens when we do it on the first and third Mondays.
Commissioner Lavasser?
I'm, I'm looking specifically at the April and May area, and I note that there is currently three weeks in between the April 22nd meeting and the proposed May 13th meeting, and then a one week between the May 13th and the May 20th. I'm just wondering if it might make sense to move that May 13th to May 6th, which would make for a, a two-week to two-week gap between April 22nd, the May 6th, and then the May 20th meeting.
Commissioner Bruce?
I, I was looking at the same dates, and it's noted in the chart that Easter is April 21st. I don't know what the, what the school calendar is.
April 2nd is like typically the Oakland County spring break.
Okay. So I'm just wondering if it would be better to, in order to add a, a meeting and shrink the time between, if it would be better to have the meeting on April 29th as opposed to April 22nd and move it a week away from Easter?
And then maybe move that April 8th meeting up, you know, the following week, because I do believe the school district is on break.
Oh, okay.
The week of April 2nd, and, or it might be the 8th. I'm gonna look it up right now.
So that would be April 15th, are you suggesting?
Let's look at the 2018-19.
It would have put enough.
Yeah, so, so the school district is off April 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 5th, so the first week of April.
School's back in session on the?
On the 8th, it's back in, in session on the 8th. So the 8th looks, looks like it's fine. Yeah, that's 2019. Was looking at 18. Year makes a difference.
Yeah. I don't know, may, maybe there's no way to make it any better. Just gonna have to go with it.
Easter Monday's not off, is it?
Sometimes we get a little break, that's all right.
Easter, the 15th is, Easter is the 21st, right?
First, so what's the 20th, is the 22nd off or not?
22nd does not look like it's off, but the 15th, yeah, there's no, the, the 19th is off, so Good Friday is off, but there's no Easter Monday.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I note that November 11th is Veterans Day, if that makes any difference to staff.
It's not a vacation day for us.
Yeah, that's happened before. I think it did this year. Wait, no, it's always the 11th. Maybe I'm thinking last year. But it, but it's, but it's been on a Monday before. We've met. We've had the ceremony in the morning and a meeting in the evening.
All right, Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of the calendar as it is presented.
Support? Motion by Commissioner Perush, supported by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion? Commissioner Macy?
What happened to the good idea about squeezing those weeks? I'd like to make a motion that we change April 22nd to April 29th.
Well, you, then you get a three-week gap in April, too.
Oh.
We always end up with some three-week gaps.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be three weeks someplace.
All right, so there's no solution?
Yeah, I think if you're gonna have some sort of gap, it might be best to be in April with everything going on, with Easter, you know, plopping in on the 21st, you know, people might be taking vacations and all of that stuff that want to, that have business in front of the city or maybe they're.
Supporting my motion, because that's what it sounds like.
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that during the month of April with school spring break in the beginning, you know, and, and.
That's not when the three-week gap is.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you are, maybe I am supporting it and saying, push it off, yeah.
Well, I don't feel strongly, I didn't get a second, so.
Anyone want to amend? Did you put a motion out there?
I did, no one seconded it.
All right, I guess at 12:15 a.m., we're gonna keep it the, what it is. All right, we're gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have our schedule for next year. This brings us to item number 18, which is the confirmation of the mayoral appointment to the planning commission, and I have appointed Anne Boucher. She has incredible experience in planning, both internationally and, and nationally. I had a chance to speak with her and a few other candidates for the position, and I'll tell you, we get some pretty qualified, pretty really well-qualified people in the city to serve in this capacity. That was very, that's a really positive thing, so, but I enlisted the support of all of you here on the commission, I enlisted the support of the planning commission. It came down to a couple candidates in my mind that was really struggling who to pick, and based on the results and recommendations, Anne Boucher is the pick, so. Commissioner Dubak?
Appreciate the thorough process, I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, with not a call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to our last item, which is the approval of administrative rules for executive department heads. Tentative.
I can take this one. Mayor Fornian and city commissioners, what you have before you are updated and amended administrative rules for the executive department heads to cover the period from July 1st of 2016 to June 30th of 2019. This document is a couple of things. Number one, it's a consolidation of all the administrative rule changes that we've had going back to roughly 2005 or 2006. We haven't had a consolidated document since that time. We've had, just had a series of amendments, so this would compile all the changes over those period of years into one document. In addition, this document also reflects the most recent round of changes in employee benefits in terms of employment that are reflected in the other, the, the actual collective bargaining agreements for the city's specific collective bargaining units. The one area where these rules are different than the others in terms of, of benefits is there is provision in here for an additional 1% employer contribution to the employees' 457 accounts. Again, that's a recognition of the, the important role that the executive department heads play in day-to-day city operations here, a way to maintain that current staffing and also to attract new employees to those positions when they become vacant. So we would recommend approval of the administrative rules for the executive department heads from the period of July 1 of 16 to June 30 of 19.
Questions for Mr. Gillum? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of these.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion? No discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We've reached the end of our meeting, unless there's something for the betterment of the citizens of Royal Oak, undertake a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Perush? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion on this motion? Crickets? There are none? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.